Much, the first person to testify is?
Commissioner Ross.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, President.
Good morning, and thank you, and again formally, congratulations.
Well, thank you so much, sir.
Please proceed.
All right. Good morning, Council President Clark and distinguished members of council. I am Commissioner Richard Ross. Joining me today are Deputy Commissioners Christine Coulter and Deputy Commissioner Myron Patterson. Also joining us is Deputy Commissioner Denise Turpin. Allow me to start by saying that I am very proud of our sworn and civilian personnel who work hard to make this city a safer place. We are combating crime and working to build strong relationships with all of our communities. We are building a strategic plan that focuses on the following: crime prevention, building community trusts, improving traffic safety, supporting employee wellness, and using technology effectively. The department's fiscal year 2017 total operating budget request $650,176,870 for the general fund, $36,752,74 for the operating fund. The proposed FY '17 budget supports 7,537 positions. Of those, 6,525 are sworn. The contracted 3.25% wage increase for fiscal '17 is for sworn members. Additionally, the FY '17 proposed general fund allocation in Class 200 and 300 includes funding for body-worn cameras. The total FY '17 proposed general fund budget is .338% lower than the FY '16 current projection. The total FY '17 operating budget is estimated to be 1.46% higher than the FY '16 current projections. And moving on to our accomplishments. While faced with the challenges seen across this country, our department has achieved significant accomplishments. The department recently received accreditation from the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association. Ours is the largest municipal department to receive this accreditation. We've also made strides with the use of our technology in criminal investigations. We recently completed the first phase of our body-worn camera pilot program in the 22nd District and are set to complete the pilot with the rollout of 300 body-worn cameras there this month. We have also piloted a gunshot detection camera program in eight police districts and are seeking grant funding to expand the program. One of our successful endeavors is the police school diversion program. We provide community-based services to students as an alternative to arrests and address the students' needs while preventing them from entering the criminal justice system. So far, through this program, more than 900 children have been diverted. We're looking to expand the program by adding additional offenses for diversion. In the area of crime reduction, the department continues to make progress in many areas of crime reduction. So far in '16, we've seen an increase in shooting victims unfortunately and a slight increase in homicides. Part I violent crimes have declined by 3% in calendar year '16 compared to the same period in '15. Part I violent crimes include homicide, sexual assault, robbery, and aggravated assault. The following are a few stats as of yesterday for year-to-date compared to last year. Homicides are up 9%, however rapes are down 19%, robbery is down 9%, burglaries are down 21%. While we have seen historic drops in recent years, we still have work to do to combat gun violence. We're always working on strategies aimed at reducing crime while doing so constitutionally and respectfully. We must continue to strengthen trust in our communities. I know that trust is built in many ways. One is through caring and professional interactions between officers and citizens. Clearly, everyone wants and deserves to be treated fairly and have their concerns acknowledged. We will also continue to implement the recommendations of the Justice Department and the Presidential Task Force. We also value our partnership with the Police Advisory Commission. The President of the Commission is now a voting member on the Use of Force Review Board, and that is our Use of Force Review Board. We have increased our de-escalation training. We train our officers to make sound decisions and ensure our policies reflect best practices. The goal is to make our encounters safer for citizens and police officers. Last year, we had a 50% reduction in police-involved discharges, and that reduction has continued into this year. This is a challenging time for the police profession, as we all know. However, the men and women of this department are committed to facing these challenges. I'm honored to lead such a fine group of sworn and civilian professionals, and at this time, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Got a couple of questions. I'm actually gonna utilize the bulk of my time on an issue that I've been talking about for quite some time: security cameras. Yesterday, on the OIT portion of the testimony, there was a discussion with respect to technology and technology use as it relates to security systems, the whole nine yards, and cameras. And I just wanted to clarify from their perspective about the operational ability, capability of the department as it relates to cameras. Went to a meeting in Fishtown the other night. People over there, they wanted more cameras because there've been some issues around the rec centers. I know Councilwoman Bass, in years past, had worked on getting significant revenue, the cameras, and was at a meeting, had a meeting, Germantown and Erie, business people were in, talking about cameras. They wanted more cameras. There apparently a couple of cameras up there, but they're like out of service. So it's just this constant theme about wanting to have opportunities to have more cameras, because you can't have a police person on every corner. The consistent response is that we don't have people watching all of the cameras, so you can get real-time information. That creates more of a preventive atmosphere. If I could see a corner where it looks like somebody's selling drugs, you know, you kind of like, yo, go over there and check that out, right? As opposed to, you know, being in a position to try to have the cars all over the place, and then somebody gets shot, then the aftermath, you pull all the cameras in the area. I've always been a strong proponent, along with a number of members in council, about our ability to proactively have security. Actually, I was in Rittenhouse Square the other night. Councilman Johnson and I represent that area, and they were talking about surveillance in that area. What can we do to enhance cameras for real-time, understanding the limitations of staffing? But I've seen instances where we were able to utilize workforce other than police officers. I've seen instances where sector cars and a single officer, one or two officers in the car, was able to expand their ability to look within their sector, i.e. Baltimore, with their laptop in the car and had access to every camera in the area, that I thought was pretty awesome. Is there something that we can do? And if not, why aren't we doing more as it relates to that?
Sure. So, Council President, one of the things, and you're right about the preventative measures and being proactive, I mean, that's the optimal way to do it, I mean, and not to catch someone after the fact. It's nice to have access to over 3,000 cameras, but when you can't proactively get in front of it, it's a challenge. The difficulty for us is having the requisite manpower to do that. So I, let me, let me parallel something for you. You're probably familiar with our civilian operations room personnel called Corus, which we, some years ago, started using them to try to balance out our resources for the officers that work inside. And in my mind's eye, if we had folks who are maybe civilian, hired at not necessarily the rate of a police officer, because it's a significant cost factor to have that many police officers monitor even the number of cameras that we have, just for the city. But I think it's, you're going somewhere with this that I think is a good idea. I don't see why, if we were willing to expand upon that with additional hiring, with our present manpower, we could never do it. And there is a concern about, even though there is an ability technically to funnel that, that information through the mobile data computers in the cars, I don't know that the bandwidth can handle that in a manner that it would be that clear. But even if you could, I got concerns about people trying to look at screens while they're driving and so forth and so on, and so it creates some significant challenges for us. But I, I would be very much open to any possibility of having more people leveraging that, that resource of all those cameras and being more proactive. We just, practically speaking, would not have the manpower given what we have right now to do that.
Okay. So what's your position on public safety officers versus, similar to what we do in New York and Baltimore, clearly above a parking authority intended, but not necessarily a fully-fledged police officer?
Sure.
Where that public safety officer performs such duties as watching surveillance cameras, such duties as traffic control, those things that they do in other municipalities where you don't need a full-fledged police officer?
Well, Council President, rather succinctly, I would welcome it. Because, again, when you, you referenced New York City, I'd gone there under Commissioner Ramsey a couple times, and quite frankly, as I know you've seen, you'll ride around those streets and you have to get up close just to discern who's the police officer and who's not, which maximizes resources. So for me, I have no issue with it. I can't speak to whether the union would, but for me, in terms of bargaining member work, but whether it be traffic safety officers, public safety officers in this regard, and I know this will come up later, so I'm gonna get in front of it a little bit, but it dovetails to your question. Even with our body-worn cameras and the ability to monitor and upload that information, it does not necessarily require a police officer to do that. If you had individuals like you're describing?
Right.
They would help us immensely. So I'm telling you, from this side of the table, we wholeheartedly support that endeavor and, and using those people in any number of ways that you alluded to already.
Yeah. I'm just, you know, and I know I keep talking about this every year, and you guys probably get tired of me talking about it. Councilman Jones, myself, I don't know, we had somebody, we went over to Camden to look at the spot shotter. I don't know how that's working, but they were pretty excited about it. I mean, you know, you think of a spot shot, I think about an area, Cumberland Street in my council district, which I know best. For some reason, Cumberland Street, from 6th and Cumberland all the way to 33rd and Cumberland, it's like, that's where the bulk of the shootings happened. I don't know what it is about Cumberland Street. It's just this corridor, and you got a, and I know Deputy Commissioner over here knows it, we grew up in that neighborhood.
Right.
And if you had some sort of a proactive surveillance strategy along that corridor, I gotta think that in a minimum, you would break up this continuous flow of violence along that corridor, as opposed to going down the street seeing teddy bears every weekend. I mean, it's just, I say, we got it, you know, and I'm glad to hear that you're open to it, but I would really like-
Absolutely. Absolutely, Council President. I mean, and so anything like that that'll help us, first of all, make this city safer, but more to your point about saving lives, and that's what a lot of this will help us to do. And this is what we endeavor to do each and every day in a number of ways. Sometimes the men and women in this uniform don't get the credit for that, but that's what they're out there doing each and every day. And so, to the extent that there could be some type of resources available for the city as a whole, but in particular for this police department, we would welcome that.
All right. I just think that, when we initially talked about this, and you know, I guess it was the street administration, we did a bunch of cameras, and it was questions about the technology and, you know, we didn't have fiber anywhere other than Broad Street, we didn't have any, some of the ancillary streets, and we couldn't necessarily get the systems to work, the whole nine yards, we hired them. But, and I'll, this is my last point on this, and I'll turn it over. But today, and reference that meeting with the Germantown and Erie business people, as I'm talking about being able to have utilized technology to enhance our ability to monitor these neighborhoods, and I know you've seen this, one of the guys in the media store owner, he pulls out his phone, he pulls up on his phone, he says, "This is my store." He's real-time looking at people walking down the aisles. He says something crazy, "I think this guy's gonna restill something." I said, "Man, I don't wanna hear that." Right, but that's the level of detail.
Sure.
Right? And then he pulls out the outside of the store. So I'm saying, if somebody could do that with a cellphone, I don't know how bandwidth or any of these other issues could limit our capabilities as it relates to being able to see these, these challenging corners.
Right. And so, some of the challenges, challenges, Council President, I mean, have been satisfied since, you know, you and I talked about this years ago in the other street administration, but because we, I think they told you yesterday, we can, I can pull up on my phone-
Right.
-all the city cameras, and I can look at them and so forth and so on. It doesn't satisfy your, your concern, though, about the ability to view stuff real-time. So that's, we might be a little ways away, but if we can, again, being redundant, if we could work on that, we'd be all for it.
All right. I would like to follow up along with our Public Safety Committee, because I know we're gonna, got a lot of issues that we want to talk about public safety.
Absolutely.
Thank you, and I'll come back on the next round. Thanks, Commissioner. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
On the same subject of, of cameras, and you've talked about the, the body camera program. Can you get into that a little bit more? I know you said it, the pilot program in the 22nd, and 300 cameras by the end of the year, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And that's spread out around the city, or?
Well, so, here's what it is, Councilman, right now. You know, we piloted this program with the 22nd District. It started with about 27 officers, give or take. And we started with 11 cameras, essentially. Most of them didn't even make their way out of the door. I mean, they just didn't fit the specs, and some of them just really weren't good cameras. And once it got dwindled down to two, and the officers, through a little informal study, were the ones that had a lot to do with that, it then subsequently went to Taser. And it had a lot to do with their audio and how well their audio was. They were kind of close on some other things, on the video, but they did that, and, and we can get into some of the nuances, but the bottom line is, Taser ended up buying out another company. You know, the storage capacity is a big issue for us with cameras, but we have 300 that we've already have in our possession, and they're all gonna be in the 22nd District right now, answering to your question.
Oh, and the 22nd.
Right. That's, we're still in pilot phase.
And how long does, if you know yet, how long do one of them last? I mean, what's the life?
Well, I think we're, we're gonna be looking at a four- to five-year cycle. I mean, because if, if you, if you went out there with some-
Four to five, I'm sorry.
Four to five years.
Four to five years.
Because what we don't want to do is purchase, to be that optimistic and go out there and purchase 4,000 cameras, and they all basically malfunction at the same year. That would be a mistake. So we're looking to phase it in over about a four-year period, give or take, and, and so that we can get as many cameras, or however long it takes. The issue with the body cameras is, from a fiscal standpoint, is all about storage. The storage capacity is what is costly for a lot of departments, and figuring out how to do that, this, in some ways, this is uncharted territory for most of law enforcement. And then when you get into the large agencies like us, it really, really presents some challenges. But we're committed to doing this. I believe it's the wave of the future, but there's a lot of things we still are yet to know about this, this program.
I guess it's something, if you have it, you want to do it right.
You want to do it right, and so you constantly pay attention to other agencies. Again, I think, save for Houston, there's, there's not a lot of large departments that have gone wholesale with it yet. And so, trying to be somewhat judicious about how we do it, this is why we, again, stress we're still in the piloting phase, even though, you know, we've purchased the 300, and we have, I think, an 800 in our budget. And so, but we still gotta be careful about how we do this, because it's, the purchase of the camera, the cost of the camera is not an issue, really. I mean, everything's an issue fiscally, but that's not the big cost. The big cost is the storage, and that's what's gonna be the challenge for us in the city.
Hmm, okay. And I guess this whole issue of body cameras fit into that, what you alluded to early on in your testimony, to building community trusts?
Is that kinda?
Is there anything particularly other, you talked about the Justice Department guidelines and dealing with use of force. Is there anything else that, when you talk about building community trust, that you're particularly might be, might be focused on?
It's myriad in nature. We, we got so many things that we already do, some of which we probably don't market very well. If we're guilty of probably anything, it's not marketing the things we do well. We have men and women that are involved in so many programs, some of which on their own, but you know, we, we're gonna be looking to, hopefully expand, expand the Police Athletic League, that's a big one. We've got the Cheers Program that you may have heard us talk about, which is a mentoring program, and there are 300 and something students that have gone through that. They just had a program this last weekend at Temple and Magonicle Hall. I went through there, they had about 80 to 100 students there. We're trying to build it ground up and vice versa, but making use of even things like our police service areas, we, we gotta do a little bit better in connecting with people. You may have heard me say before, one of the challenges that I think this police department and many others have is, you and I were at a community meeting last night. What you don't see a lot of is young men in their 20s and 30s at any meeting. And it's, it's not casting aspersions on them and their level of commitment to the city, but we have to find a way to develop relationships with people who, let's be honest, who are most likely to encounter the police one way or another, even if it's mistaken identity, even if it's just any number of ways. And, and that's a demographic that I, I think we have to work very hard on making connections with. But we, we do so many things, Councilmen, that we're proud of, and, but we acknowledge that in this profession, and Philadelphia's a part of it, we've got a, a long way to go, and, and particularly in our communities of color. I don't want to suggest that we, we don't have any relationships in our communities, because that would be not true. But to suggest that we have arrived also would be disingenuous, and that's not the case. We are not satisfied, but we also don't accept the notion that we have no relationships in our communities of colors, because that's also not true.
I got you. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning to each of you.
Good morning.
So, given the national state of affairs as it relates to community and police department, sort of relationships, you know, if we were doing it wrong on all occasions, it would get a lot of coverage. But when we do it right, those things aren't highlighted much. And it's with that in mind that I need to give a huge shout-out to our guys in the 9th District.
Well, thank you so much.
Relative to Captain Kinnabrew, 14, Wood in the 35th, and McLean, because they have made extraordinary advances in improving community relations in those areas. And if they weren't doing it right, we would say that, so when they get it right, we need to acknowledge that.
Well, thank you for saying that.
As well. Have a few, a few other people, Willis, who's our gentle giant, and we just lost Sharad Davis. And I'm, I'm, these are from notes, from text messages I received this morning from community-based organizations, saying, "Make sure you get this on the record." And, and all of our PSA lieutenants, they've done a great job.
Right.
With that in mind, I wanted to talk about commercial corridors and bike cops versus beat cops. Tell us how, if you will, do you determine which corridors receive bike cops versus the beat? And are there any fiscal constraints to ensuring that these quarters have coverage during the central business hours from 9 to 11?
So, what we try to do, first of all, I'm glad you mentioned, Councilwoman, the, the beat officer, because we, we make such widespread use of our beat officers. Everybody coming out of the academy walks a beat, and they really don't walk commercial corridors. They, they now walk crime beats, and, and we do that for a number of reasons. But with regard to the commercial corridor piece, a lot of what we do in that regard, we leave to the district captains. And, and once we started years ago with this ComStat crime oversight process, we leave a lot to the captains in terms of their decision-making, because we hold them very much accountable for what they do. And so you can't have it both ways, sitting on this side of the table, dictate everything that they do, and then when they don't do what you want, you know, there's, there's an issue. You have to make sure they have a, a degree of latitude and a wide berth to do what they need to do. But you, you mentioned some very dynamic captains that you have up there, and they are very, very responsive, as you know. The challenge is, you also have some very busy districts, and so they are tasked sometimes with pushing their resources, even bikes, because those bikes can't say enough about, all of them. I mean, their ability both to respond, because they can navigate streets a lot easier than cars can, and they also can cultivate relationships where people driving a car might not necessarily be able to do that. One of the challenges, and you and I had a brief discussion, is, is about our lack of manpower that we're working on. And it's not any fault of City Hall, it's not a budget issue, we're budgeted for it, so this is not a pointing-the-finger thing, this is our inability to get people in the doors. All that dovetails into your question, the ability to put people in those corridors, because in any district, it's gonna be police cars first, followed by perhaps bikes and/or footbeats, depending on where you are and where you're assigned. Now, when I said that everyone is assigned to a footbeat, that's not forever. And so eventually, they're gonna come out and they're gonna go in a car anyway. And so, with the level of manpower where we are today, it presents significant challenges in some of our commercial corridors. We rely very heavily on our captain's ability to assess their crime patterns, to assess their business issues, and make the adjustments accordingly.
Well, Commish, let me just, for the record, while we and our captains do have sort of, you know, tough decisions to make when they're trying to work with the allocation of very scarce resources, particularly when you think about the 14th that has such a large mass of area in, in order to cover. And so, I would just ask, at the executive level, when we're sort of making, making those decisions, that we ensure that those bike patrol officers are viewed as being essential, because you described it, they connect in a way that a car doesn't allow us to. Moody and Merchant, I don't know if you're familiar with those guys?
Absolutely.
But they had relationships that dated back for 30 years, and they knew generations of families.
Right.
Right? So, so it helps. So I wanted to ensure that I advocated for that. In addition to that, I was questioned last week at a meeting about whether or not the department is going to continue PSA meetings. And have you heard any discussion at all, or are there any potential plans to eliminate the use of PSA meetings? I had not. A community member asked.
No. What we're looking to do is perhaps revamp some of the PSA program, but not get rid of it. So, one of the challenges that we had is maybe being too hell-bent on having what they call PSA integrity for the police officer. This really didn't impact the individual citizen as much as is an internal operational piece, where in an effort to keep police officers on their PSA, they now weren't traversing the district, sometimes in a 911 emergency fashion like we would've needed them to. I mean, we don't have the luxury of locking you in a particular grid. And so, one of the things you heard me mention previously, Councilwoman, is our, in my estimation, lackluster storytelling in our marketing. And so, I, I am somewhat dismayed, I'll be honest with you, in the number of community meetings I've gone to over the last four, five, six years, where I'll ask the question about who even knows about a PSA, and, and not even half of the room raises their hand. And so, we haven't done a really good job of that. We'll have to do better, because if you work the concept right, particularly as it relates to what you're talking about, and understanding there's another level of management that Mrs. Jones, Mrs. Smith, Mrs. whoever now can call, and not just the captain, I mean, the concept is great, but it's only as great as us letting people know that it exists. And so we gotta work, but it's not going away. It's just gonna change a little bit.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gill.
Hi. Good, good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Thank you very much for all your work, and looking forward to working with you. Some of my questions have to do with the department's approach towards, I guess, I don't know if you want to call our program our phrase or approach I guess I don't know if you want to call our program our phrase or approach around stop and frisk. Can you talk to me a little bit about how that procedure has evolved from the last administration to this one?
All right. So I think the first thing to point out is the mayor and I are on the same page with regard to ensuring that we're not doing unconstitutional stops, and that's without casting aspersions on any other administration at this point in time. The interesting thing that I always point out to everyone is that internally, we've never used the term "stop and frisk." We use the term pedestrian investigation. And so just, it is the same thing. At the risk of sounding disingenuous, it is the same thing. But we don't use that word. But it comes out of, as you probably know by now, a 1968 case, Terry versus Ohio. It's a landmark case, which actually the United States Supreme Court made it okay for a police officer, assuming they have reasonable suspicion to believe that a crime was underway, that you could then stop that individual, and then if subsequent to that stop, you believe that there's something about that stop that suggests the individual was armed, and you had fear for your safety, you could stop them, just in the way of background. Because there's a lot of, it's such a complex issue that a lot of people don't understand. One of the things that I think we've done, Councilwoman, we were somewhat remiss in our oversight. We had it. We have some oversight that was already in place, but we are falling significantly short of where we should be with regard to even the policies we've had in place with regard to ensuring that these stops were done properly. They were documented properly. They were articulated properly. Supervisors were assigning them. So we did a number of things under counsel, I mean, under Mayor Kenny, I'm sorry, that we think will yield some significant inroads. And I had a long discussion with the federal judge about a couple of weeks ago. It was going to make sure we get it right. And so some of those things are as follows. Number one, previously, the captain was almost on the back end of the review, which is not the way it should be done. So captains now have the ability to review these, we call them 48As, which is the report the officers actually prepare these pedestrian stops on. They will review them daily. It has become a part of our ComStat process, which is where, you know, our little tribunal, if you will, where we hold captains accountable for their crime. But we've added this dimension or component to it for oversight. And the reality of it is, and is a part of it that we don't want to have to talk about, and we believe we'll never get to this point, or hopefully, is the individual officer with regard to how they respond if they're not appropriately filling it out. Obviously, with anything in the department, your first action would be to make sure that officers are trained who may be coming up short in terms of not doing what they're supposed to do. The next step would be counseling, followed up by progressive discipline. I don't think that will ever be the case. But the point is, we've got significant measures in place now, and we've got to get these numbers down. Because these are numbers that we spotted, and this is what should be pointed out. It is our internal auditing that discovered that we came up short. And in our third quarter of last year, we had a spike because of some misunderstanding oversight arrests. So we're doing a lot of things to come into compliance on that, and I think we're going to really work some things out with this.
I appreciate that. Could you talk a little bit about one particular aspect of that procedure, which involves civil forfeitures? And in part, it's the question about how small cash seizures may accompany a typical pedestrian. Is it stopping investigation?
Stopping, just a pedestrian investigation?
A pedestrian investigation. And that occasionally, I mean, as we know, under the civil forfeitures, the police can keep half, the DA may keep half. But that, in part, the seizure of money can, in some ways, incentivize the idea of stop and frisk, and/or pedestrian investigations, rather. And there's been a lot of questions that have been raised about this issue of civil forfeiture. And we've seen some instances in the past about police corruption that involve cash and other kinds of valuables and property. And I guess is the department, would you consider committing to a review or even a practice of only seizing cash from stops when there is an arrest and conviction as opposed to, after the conclusion of a criminal case, as opposed to prior to that?
All right. So that's kind of multifaceted. So first of all, I think I would, I believe that there's not as many cases off of a pedestrian investigation where cash is confiscated. The civil forfeiture thing that you're referring to typically applies to large narcotics confiscations in many instances. And we aren't the only entity involved in that. The district attorney's office in state cases would be the primary one, and in federal one, it would be the federal government. So that would be the biggest one when you're talking about seizures in civil court. With regard to any money seized during a pedestrian investigation, an officer would have to have a significant reason to confiscate money if there was not an arrest. And so there would have to be some belief that there's a narcotics nexus, and then they have to go through a whole litany of things. Perhaps if they're in a vehicle of getting a search warrant, they would have to perhaps have a narcotics dog come out. But the bottom line is, if there's any money confiscated, we changed our policy on evidence about a year or two ago. Money has to be turned in immediately. We don't want money sitting in lockers. We don't want even the appearance of impropriety regarding that. So with regard to your question, would we be open to that? Sure. I mean, if there is a mechanism that is structured enough, that is not so cumbersome, because a lot of times people do studies and they drop it in the police department's lap, and we aren't left with the resources to get it done. But clearly, anything that we can do that's going to remove that appearance of impropriety from, our police officers don't want that either. We don't want this notion that people think we just stole their money. We want to create a paper trail, and we already have that. This is why I said, again, they have to turn that money in right away.
Right. So I think one question is, I mean, you know, a number of organizations like the ACLU have indicated that there have actually been a number of small cash forfeitures. And one of the questions has been is whether there, is there any kind of police directive that limits the maximum, I mean, the minimum amount of cash that can be taken in any stop? And I understand that you're dealing with, you know, criminals on all levels of the spectrum. And I'm not contesting people with large narcotics or, you know, things that are happening that are onsite clearly connected. But I think the question is about whether there is any kind of directive that establishes some sort of a minimum amount of small, of cash so that we reduce the risk of abuse of some of the pedestrian stops, and in particular, address some of the concerns that have been raised by, you know, some civil rights organizations about, you know, whether these forfeitures are happening on the level that they need to happen.
Sure. So unless I'm incorrect, and I don't believe I am, the policy is not so much about a threshold as much as it is about whether or not you have the requisite probable cause to even do that. And so we would not want to be boxed in a corner. It's based on the case and whether or not you have the legal right to do that as a police officer, based on the case, not based on a monetary amount. Because if, for example, if an officer were to witness something that is clearly criminal in nature and that proceeds from that criminality clearly are as a result of that transaction, to take that away from...
We're talking about prior to conviction.
I'm sorry?
We're talking about prior to conviction. We're talking about at the moment of the stop.
Right. Well...
So there's been no conviction. There's been no indication.
Well, right, at that point, it's taken for evidence, and that's on a property receipt. Anything that we take from an individual is put on a property receipt anyway. And in those cases that you're alluding to, they would either be, in most cases, described as evidence. In some cases, it would be safekeeping. But if anything, where we're taking it because we believe the person was doing something illegal, it would be on a property sheet, what it is. And at that juncture, it is not officially removed from them at that time. They have a court proceeding that they would go to. But we do not have a mechanism right now to say, and I don't know that we would want to, to say that you can make this decision on the street, because then it becomes too arbitrary. And so it gets a little dangerous. And so right now, at least if an officer knows he takes property, money or what have you, or some other valuable, you have to put that on a property receipt. It has to be turned in to our evidence custodian. And that person has to be provided a copy of it, you know. And then later on, there is a mechanism, even with guns, where you can submit a memo to the appropriate person, depending on the case, to have your property returned. So there is a mechanism in place, but we don't have arbitrary thresholds about how much money.
So I'll go back to those questions in a few minutes. But thank you very much.
You come back? Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President, and good morning.
Good morning.
And I just want to say on the record, I love the police department. Because without safety, we have nothing. So I appreciate everything you guys do. It's great. Thank you. But I have some questions I just wanted to make sure I understood, and it has to do with overtime. And it says in the budget that our overtime costs in '15 were about $49 million.
Right.
And in '16, they're going to be $60 million, $11 million higher. And then they're coming back down in the projection to $49 million for the budget we're looking at now. Bringing it back down. What's the two or three biggest reasons why there's $49 million of overtime?
Well, and I'll let Deputy Coulter get into the specifics, but you have two primary reasons. One is court time.
What's that?
Court time. When officers go to court, right, and that's roughly about $24 million annually. And a very challenging part of it, I mean, if an officer's working midnight to eight, or they're working four to twelve, and they, all the court cases are primarily during the day, they by contract obviously get time and a half. And so we have a lot of officers that are in court each and every day, out there doing the job that you just commended them for. And so that typically runs around that figure. And then you have investigative overtime for any number of things. It could be for homicide. It could be for special victims. It could also be for late arrests where officers are held over. And so the balance of that is taking up in issues like that. Now, as for the spike, I don't know if you want to speak about...
One of the issues dealing with the larger number last year was we factored in the papal visit. A lot of that money was reimbursed, but we knew that for that duration of that time, our officers would be on 12-hour shifts, working much later, much longer. We did get reimbursed for that, but it was still, occurred as overtime for our officers at the time.
Mr. Chair, can I get a point of information?
Point of information, Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Can you just clarify if the overtime is a part of the police officers that covers the stadium district in South Philadelphia, all of our sports teams, games as well? Just for the record, please.
That is a combination of both straight time and overtime officers for those details. There are memos of understanding in place with our sports teams where that money is reimbursed. There's a contract that they'll hire a specific number of officers based on the expected attendance and who's playing at that event. So that money is reimbursed through our system. And we do, right now, we have about a 94% collection at reimbursement. We'd be pretty good at getting that money back in. But we initially pay it out and then are reimbursed for it. I'm sorry, Councilman Don.
Are we concerned about the Democratic Convention coming and overtime for that convention? Has that been factored into this budget?
We're certainly concerned about it, but there is a mechanism where we're reimbursed for that. That money has already, I believe, been transferred to the city funds in order to pay for anything that's related to the convention, not only overtime, but special equipment or some of the other things that our department will need, as well as other city departments.
And the $24 million that cost us for the police officers to have to go to court, is there any alternative solutions you can think of to try to save some of that money?
Well, I mean, that's something we've looked at for a number of years. And the challenge is, we get subpoenaed by the district attorney's office. And so they have court cases they have to put on, some of them, they find witnesses at the last minute. And so for us, this is not pointing the finger at them. It's such a multifaceted thing, we're dealing with the collective bargaining aspect of it, which does not give us a lot of latitude. There are some cities that have more flexibility, where their officers get comp time and other things like that. My brother was like that when he was in Wilmington years ago. We don't have that flexibility through collective bargaining. So what we have tried to do in the district attorney's office and even the courts have done a pretty decent job of trying to make sure they schedule as many cases as possible when the officer's on a daywork tour. Large-scale operation like Philadelphia and a large operation like Philly PD, it gets a little challenging to try to do that. Again, it's largely because of work rules that it makes it very difficult for us to get around that cost. But we have a very comprehensive overtime review policy that we're very proud of. And there's a case review done by our status and accountability unit that looks at these cases. So we've done a lot of things, and we chip away at it. But I don't want to lead you to believe that that's going to lend itself to some dramatic reduction in court overtime because we, quite frankly, just don't have the mechanism to do that. But we monitor it every day. Our supervisors are tasked with making sure we don't put unnecessary people on a case, that people don't, that are not needed, are not there. And we've got a good working relationship with the DA's office. So I think, to the degree that even they can take people off the case, they do. But it's just something that's been a challenge for a long time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Point of information?
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gill.
Thank you. Good morning. Along that line, just because you're on that frame of thought, it would be really good for us to get a snapshot of your overtime over the last three or four years by category, because I do think there's some things you can control and some things you don't. But I think it would give us an idea of, are we making decisions around special events? Are we making those types of decisions? So, because we always have this conversation about your overtime, and sometimes you rein it in and then it goes back out. And so having it by category, I think, would be helpful. Because then, as the, you know, Democratic Convention comes and other things, we need to be cognizant that we're adding to that because of the decisions we're asking.
And we actually, we can provide that, Councilman. That's not a problem.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Now you're going to put me at the end.
Well, I thought you, I thought that was your turn.
My turn.
Councilwoman, I'm noticing a pattern, Councilwoman.
So I'm going to do like five-point information for the next...
We put you, we put you right back where you were. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, President. Well, first, let me say congratulations. Is this your first testimony as Commissioner?
As Commissioner, but as you know, I've been here about 10 times before at this table.
Yes, I know. So I appreciate that. It's been a pleasure to work with you and your team. And me personally, I have a great satisfaction in having you as our Commissioner. I think Commissioner Ramsey did a great job. I think you're going to do a great job. So I feel very optimistic about our future.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
So one of the things I was wondering, and I enjoy our conversations, one of the great things about you, so accessible and willing to have conversations, you know, along the lines of the Council President's conversation about security cameras, could I ask you your thoughts on a police drone unit? The reason is, and you may not like the idea, I just wonder, a drone would be mobile, and we are probably going to have to, at some point in time, register drones in our city. We're going to require them to be registered. I would suspect we got to do that. And also get a fee for them and keep track of them and make sure there's no abuses and things like that. But the city drones, like a police drone, that could be, the unit could be paid for from those fees. And then the issue is, then you'd have mobile visibility. Well, you know, everybody's got a different opinion. We're going to have drones flying around the city. I think we can have visibility to mark them, to let people know. But could you share your thoughts on whether that is something that would or would not work, or raises concerns?
Well, the good thing about you and I knowing each other for a number of years is you know when I don't know, I'm going to tell you I don't know.
Yes.
And I don't know what I feel about that, to be honest with you. The jury's out on that, I think, in a lot of ways, in civil rights issues and privacy issues. And I think there would be some who would be even more concerned if, quote unquote, anybody looking like Big Brother was the one doing it. And there are all kinds of government restrictions, as you would probably know better than me. And so I'm not sure what I feel about that. I don't disagree that, as it relates to technology, that is something that may come. It may be the wave of the future. I mean, we're body-worn cameras now and a whole host of other things. So I'm certainly not going to say it's not coming. I'm just going to say candidly, I don't have an answer for you right now.
Okay. Well, I'm interested in your opinion. I, one of the things that I am interested in is, you know, like, for example, this conversation of overtime and things like, having been in the district attorney's office, you know, overtime, to me, is one of those things that you cannot exactly get your hands on. Yeah, for predictable events. But, you know, officers work in shifts, and there's speedy trial, constitutional rights. And when the court wants the case on, you need the officer, you need to write number officers, you need the evidence, you need the witnesses, and that's overtime. But without that, they're not doing their job.
Right.
One of the ways to limit the cost of effective policing for our citizens is visible policing. And my interest is that cost-effectively, visible police drones, maybe with lights or something, for the issues of public sense of their civil liberties being, at least, boundaries being created, that those are mobile, and you have dedicated people in offices watching and moving around, coordinated with your police officers. It's, I think, a next wave of technology. Right now, our city has no restrictions on drones. Anybody can have a drone up in the air, moving around, listening, nods, night observation devices, thermal, whatever you want to put on there, however much you want to spend. So for me, the police and any of our city officials or law enforcement, I'm very much open, you know, to that idea. But I just wanted to get your initial impression. But thank you very much.
Yeah. But and also, just to the other point about overtime that you brought up, Councilman, I'm glad you said that, because overtime is not a bad word.
Right.
It's just something you have to control. And the reality of it is, in this business, in a city like Philadelphia, any city for that matter, a major city, you can't get it done without overtime. The question is, is how you monitor it, and are you being smart about its use? And that's the real issue.
Yeah. We, I remember when I was in, we had a review process around overtime. For example, I, as a DA, I want six of the officers, plus the ballistics, plus the drug analysis, all ready to come into court on a jury trial. But we'd work it off in the DA's office to slim it down, just to make sure that we didn't have any excess personnel. That was actually done by police administration, but then we'd get a chance to give feedback. Because the other part of it is, all that work, you know, for these guys, and then if we miss a witness and lose a case after a three-week jury trial because we didn't have a witness available, is problematic. So it's not, as you know, just on the police. It's the prosecution, it's the defense, it's the court system. So anyway, I know that the police are actively involved in trying to constrain those overtime costs. But I just, you know, just want to make statement that it's difficult because the job of the police officers then dovetails also with the prosecution... the job of the police officers then dovetails also with the prosecution and the rights of the defendants, so the amount of time involved is not really that predictable.
No, you're absolutely right, and thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chairman, President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I just wanna join the course of people saying how grateful I am to having a productive working relationship with you, and it goes back before your being a Commissioner, but also with your subordinates, particularly my captain, and he's my captain, Captain Bologna in the 19th. The only problem I will ever have
I know what it is.
With your department, is you ever try to move him, promote him. I don't wanna stifle his career, but he can't go anywhere, so we are happy with him. And I tell him that, that, I'm just, that's not good. Also, I wanna thank your department for, over the years, paying attention to some of the issues and challenges in getting minority and female recruits. You responded to it by expanding the explorers program,
Right.
Particularly in districts where young people could get to that. So I am truly appreciative of that, and in addition, wanna take away some of the barriers of more young people taking advantage of it by figuring out a way to contribute to their equipment, uniform
Sure.
Cost, which I took note of, that that's something we can do to help. So my, having said all of that, I also worked with you on the JOD recommendations and other stuff, and I'm pleased with the many trips we've taken up to the police academy and the evolution of training
Right.
That the officers are getting on how to de-escalate and things like that. So I am putting on the record, duly noting, that we are taking steps in the right direction, and it's good not to be some of these other cities that have had more acute problems than we have. Having said that, the one thing about, over the years that I've been a councilperson, the pendulum swings. One minute a community group says they're too aggressive, and then another, at the same meeting, the same people will say they're not aggressive enough. And I have to learn how to navigate that to give them the proper levels of responsiveness from you. So, to that end, there is a particular area in the 19th that every 28 days, someone will be shot, statistically. Sometimes two, they come in bunches, sometimes they're fatal, sometimes they're not, but every 28 days, like, what is your little street that you're talking about? Cumberland. Well, we got a Cumberland in the 4th District as well, and so what your response has been, when we asked the city to do cameras, they did immediately, instantly, did about six or so new cameras, and I'm appreciative of that. How do you determine when a area statistically deserves special treatment in uptick in violence in response to that? Is there a methodology that you use, and what is it?
Absolutely, and also, thanks for pointing out the work done by Captain Bologna and his people out there, because he truly is one of the hardest-working guys we have. We are very data-driven, as you know, in the police department. We probably are as skilled as any other department at gathering data, particularly as the onset of, as I mentioned previously, ComStat some 20-something years ago. And so for us, we map every crime. We hold intelligence briefing. Deputy Commissioner Patterson, every Monday, follows up on what has happened over the last week or so with his upper-level command, and that's in addition to crime. We actually, every police district has a one or two, maybe three hotspots, and that would be one of his, in the 19th District, where we grid it out, and you can see in a gold square the hottest spots, and some districts unfortunately could have multiple ones, but in yours, that would be the area you're talking about. And Captain Bologna, in this case, or any other captain, and inspector, and chief, they do an analysis of all that, and then really try to stay in front of things. So here's what I tell people, and there's nothing really novel about the thought, is that, you know, we don't have crystal balls to know if you're gonna get mad at me, Councilman, and decide you're gonna pull out a firearm and handle the things like some of our young people do. But if you know of my affiliations with a particular group or gang, and I know of yours, and the police department learns of both, you know the likelihood of retaliation rises significantly when someone is shot and/or killed, and it is incumbent upon us, then, to do everything possible to stave off that type of retaliatory shooting. We will never necessarily know about the first. However, when you have problematic grids, sometimes those are ones where, you know, you got parts of Lansdale and Lancaster, and you got 56th Street and other, that them guys, they get mad sometimes, and it's been going back, like you said, at your hearing that you and Councilman Johnson had, is like the Hatfield and McCoys. And he has them in his as well. You know that there's certain streets that they may go quiet for a minute, but then let something happen, and everybody thinks it's always gonna be about drugs. It's not necessarily about drugs. Could be about a social media disrespect, could be about you looked at my girlfriend, or you tried to hit on my girlfriend, and then the resulting shootings make no sense at all. It's, and sometimes you'll get so deep in shootings, we've had in certain divisions over the last six, seven years, shootings that went back and forth with 20, 30 people shot over a span of a year and a half, where by the time you're midway, they don't even know what it's about. Now it's just going back and forth. So, but we grid these things out, very intelligence-driven, very much on top of a lot of it, to the degree that you can, without being too reactive, is what I'm trying to say. But we really get into it hard.
So, as a result of the hearings, and some of the things we took away from it, was that there needs to be a rapid-response team that goes out in conjunction with other departments, not just your department, but to intervene before. So the retaliation, as Councilman Johnson pointed out, starts at the hospital. When the family's grieving, they're crying, and then the relative says, "I know what to do, I'm gonna go out and do whatever." So that's one level of monitoring that through a crisis intervention task force. The second part is witness protection, that we really have to take a look at how we do it, because of the close proximity of some of the victims and the perpetrators, that they go to the same grocery store, the same church, in the same schools, that we have to figure out how to keep the warring parties apart, and to encourage witnesses to come forward, because at the end of the day, after they leave the justice center, they gotta go back to that neighborhood and face street justice, sometimes that, you know, happens. So we have to, and we appropriated money for witness protection in the DA's office, but we really need to take a bigger look at it, to figure out how we cooperate with the housing authority, to move people, how we cooperate with other jurisdictions to exchange, you know, witnesses, so that folk feel more confident coming forward to say, "Yeah, I saw so-and-so do such and such." Because right now, you know, and I know you have limited resources, they go back to that world, they're kinda on their own.
Right.
So, thank you, Mr. President.
And let me just say this to a couple of your points. Number one, when you and your colleague, Councilman Johnson, had that hearing, one of the things that I liked about it is not feeling like this was all about the police department. And so you had multiple entities down here, because that's what it will take, and that's what it involves. I mean, even people from grassroots groups, yeah, several community-based organizations down here, and violence groups, but you mentioned even the hospitals, I mean, because that's where that grief starts to turn into anger, and believing that that's gonna give you this sense of satisfaction, when these guys will even tell you, when it's all said and done, it doesn't. I mean, unless you're one of the small percentage of stone-cold killers, and most are not, you know, they get really no long-term satisfaction out of that. But in that period, if no one can put their hands on them, and the entity can't just be a law enforcement governmental agency, and so I know Temple was doing some of that work, I know that, you know, there was a project done by George Mason University with Lowell Police Department in Memphis, trying to do some of what you were talking about, and trying to deal with that grief and retaliation and all those things, to work those things out.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
Again, congratulations to you and the new members
Thank you.
Of your team, and work that you do every day for us across the city. This was not one of my planned questions, but I was struck by your comments regarding the soft relationship, I'll say, of the police department with young people in their 20s and 30s. And so the question is, the work that you do is Godzilla's, and there's not a lot of time. But I am curious to know, what is the relationship with the school district, and going into the high schools, and the programs that sort of capture the imagination of young people early, before they leave high school, with the goal of even guiding them towards wanting to become a member of the law enforcement community?
Right. That's a good question. So, we try to be very intentional about touching bases with all our schools, from myself and my staff, as well as our captains, and, first of all, trying to, as you said, generate some interest in this occupation, but also connecting on another level, and showing young people that we're people too.
Mm-hmm.
This just happens to be an occupation we have, we're not this big bad bear out there looking to just terrorize you and so forth and so on, and working in those regards. And so, we actually have a sergeant in media relations who's going out to a high school to speak to several hundred students, and he's speaking specifically about media relations and how retaliatory things can start on that, disrespect
Okay.
And just trying to make another connection. The bottom line is, there are no panaceas, as we all know, but when you're willing to roll up your sleeves, and you're willing to say, "This is a commitment that even the police department is willing to make," this is why I mentioned Cheers, and I mentioned Powell. You got people who, I just signed a whole bunch of appreciation certificates for several officers, who, they all volunteer their time for this Saturday. We didn't make them do it, they weren't, they didn't get paid, they just believe in it. They believe in young people, and this is why it is a struggle for me personally, and I know for my colleagues in this department and across this country, when people make wholesale indictments of policing or cast dispersions of a group of people, you would never be able to get to do that or get away with that about a particular race or gender of people, but for some reason, it is a popular thing to do right now. We, look, I will agree to the fact that, in law enforcement, there are some issues that need to be addressed, and I think most police chiefs and most people who are somewhat thoughtful will agree with that. We've seen some things that have been absolutely egregious in nature. So anybody who wears a uniform who would suggest anything to the contrary is crazy. However, you have to be careful of this groupthink that, you know, "Well, cops all do this, cops don't care about people," and people say, "Well, okay, you say that," but that's real, and this is what's happening now. And so, we try to be intentional about making these connections with particularly our young people. I said, that demographic in the 20s, I, along with former Deputy Commissioner Bethel, has started a young millennial group about a year ago.
Okay.
And one of them, one of the people was my mentee since he was in high school, who's now like 27 now, and it's ironic, because he actually leans on me now more as a 27-year-old than he did as a 17-year-old. But some dynamic young people from across the city who are doing things in their own right, and we're trying to leverage that.
Okay.
We meet with them, it's about 25 of them, and they, and this is an eclectic group, there's males, there's females, and it's African-Americans, there's Asians, but these are people who are committed to this city, committed to young people, and these are the things we're gonna do to continue to work in very unconventional ways for a police department.
Two more questions before the bell rings, and it is unconventional. Are you aware of Suliman Rakman and the work he does around engaging millennials in all aspects of urban life? UPPN is his humongous network, where they do everything from hosting political receptions to bringing in policy walks, to talk about issues facing the city. Given your interest in millennials, his organization would be one that is a neat fit for what you're trying to do in capturing the attention of 20 and 30-year-olds.
I would love to capitalize on that, because that's, and that's, Councilwoman, you're nailing it, because that's one of the things we ask these young millennials to do, is to be ambassadors for us as well.
Yes.
To say, you know, "You just sat in with the Commissioner and Deputy, and we talked about a lot of things, not just policing and how police interact with young people. Now I need for you to go out and say," and they're very progressive, because, you know, I'm not really into tweeting and stuff like that, but they do that immediately after the meeting, and
Yes.
I'll get people say, "I just saw you on this," or "on Facebook with all these young people." And I think that speaks volumes of, one, what we're trying to do, but the fact that there are other people who are willing to partner with us
Yes, and I feel confident.
And that they don't necessarily have this negativity. They are very, very demonstrative and boisterous about what they have concerns about relative to us, so don't get me wrong.
Sure.
These aren't like card-carrying cop lovers necessarily.
No.
But they understand what it will take, and so I would love to do some of some work like that.
You can trust that my office will be a bridge for that. Give me an update on what's happening with human trafficking. I had the good fortune to sit in on a two-, three-hour forum, for lack of a better word, where your department was represented, the DA's office, and DHS, and one of the takeaways was, we need to strengthen, we need to craft more laws, we need to do more around human trafficking. And while my office has tried a couple of pieces of legislation, we couldn't not move on them for a number of reasons.
Right.
So give me an update on where you are
Sure.
And what you think we can do better going forward.
Well, one, you just did it by bringing attention to it. It is an issue, Councilwoman, that is flying beneath the radar for not just law enforcement, but for people in general. There's this mistaken notion that, in this country in particular, and even in this city, that people who are trafficked are all foreign-born and brought over here, and that is simply not the case. These are anybody's kids, and so the department is being very, very proactive. We just signed on with a grant with the Salvation Army and the district attorney's office. We are the lead in that grant, and it will enable us to do more work in human trafficking. We were already doing just a little bit, but most of it was just kind of incidental, you tripped over some of this stuff. But a lot of people don't know even something basic, that a person that is a juvenile or under 18 can't even be arrested for prostitution anymore. They are a victim. They are a victim. They are not a prostitute, they are victims. And so it is something, an endeavor, that I'm working very closely, not only with the Salvation Army, but I'm glad to know that even my church, E.9. Tappernacle, where my First Lady, Dr. Ellen Jo Waller, has taken up that task, along with Judge Lori Dumas, as you know
Yes.
Has that rap court, and so we're getting a lot of people involved in this endeavor, but people better wake up. And I'll tell you a quick story. I went out to Compton on a trip specifically for that last year, and they're doing some significant work in their court, and what they said was, is the department out there, LAPD, was a little late getting in, and what really, really opened their eyes was when one of their captain's daughters got snatched off the street. And so to think that it has to be someone who's always a runaway, and typically it is, but we need this grant to help us identify young people, because typically, these young ladies, they aren't arrested for prostitution that frequently. They, sometimes they come to our attention, or Judge Dumas' attention, via some other charge, and then when you dig deep, you find out that they're actually being trafficked, and now they've become to, learned to identify with their trafficker in ways where they don't even wanna tell you what's going on. But it is such a significant problem that people really need to open up their eyes. So thank you for raising that.
On the second, next round, I'd like to hear your response to the second part of the question, but we need to honor the clock. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes, Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I want to first and foremost congratulate Commissioner Ross on taking the helm of the Philadelphia Police Department
Thank you, sir.
And just proud to watch you rise through the ranks
Thank you.
In your current position, and also commend your team that's working with you to make sure we have one of the safest cities here in the city of Philadelphia. So I do wanna just commend you, and thank you for your efforts to address the issue of youth gun violence, and working in partnership with my office and just being an ear as we try to find ways to keep our young people involved in things that are positive, as opposed to things that are negative. I wanna start off by going over, for the current administration, with your part of, your vision for the Philadelphia Police Department, the reduction of crime, building community trust, traffic safety, counterterrorism, employee wellness, and technology. My focus is around continuing to build upon the community trust
Sure.
And working in partnership with the Philadelphia Police Department, as well as community organizations, because we understand, in order for all of us to be safe and have a safer city, there must be a partnership. Quite obvious Quite obviously, during the beginning of the administration, there was consideration of outlawing the usage of the term and practice known as stop and frisk. And going over the consent decree it talked about specifically, and I just want to read so I can make sure I'm not being misquoted, "The Philadelphia Police Department stops and frisks policies, and the consent decree was intended to ensure that stops and frisks are conducted only where there is the requisite responsible suspicion of criminal conduct and to ensure that any racial disparities in stops and frisks are not the result of impermissible bias. On reasonable suspicion issues, the DA continues to show very high numbers of illegal stops and frisks. For the first and second quarter of 2015, plaintiffs found that 33% of all stops and frisks and 42% were without reasonable suspicion. The city reports even higher rates for the second quarter, which is 62% of all stops, and 53% of all frisks were without reasonable suspicion." And that's specifically being quoted by the plaintiff's six reports to court and monitor on stop and frisk practices for amendment issues. And so, here's what I would like for you to clarify for me, because as we move the city of Philadelphia forward and we're working in a partnership with the community, you know, there are some individuals who believe that there was a commitment that this practice would be abolished, and then there was a follow-up that it would be tweaked. So, what I would like for you to do is just walk us through what's going to be different moving forward, and specific actions, because if the numbers say one thing as relates to how many people are being stopped without reasonable suspicion, in terms of the numbers, I do get if a person in a red hat robbed someone and you have to come outside, and you have to go pull someone over who has a red hat on and stop and frisk them, that seems legitimate, because it fits the description of a person involving something that's negative. But can you touch on these numbers that are as recent as 2015 from the consent decree report, and then specifically, how are we going to, what are the specific actions moving forward that will be different than in the past administration? And then also, will we be willing to abolish the term stop and frisk and focus on quality of life stops? I've been around a little bit, I know what a quality of life stops look like, or you may say, Councilman, quality of life stops is totally different from stopping frisks, but for me, the numbers don't really, from this report, add up to the reasons of why people are being pulled over, stopped and frisked. And so, I really want clarity on that, so when I'm out and I'm talking to my constituents, and I do a lot of activities with the Philadelphia Police Department, specifically the 17th with Captain Deborah Fences, Captain Campione, as well as the captain in the first. So, I do a lot of work with the first, third, and the 12th, as well as the inspectors. Always been a supporter, but I have to do my due diligence to make sure that as this administration moves forward, what are the real changes that are going to actually be done to make sure that we're doing things in decency and in fairness as relates to policing?
Okay. So, let me start with one of your last questions first, abolishing the term stop and frisk. It's abolished because we never used it, and so, to be fair, as I said before, but I explained that, you know, it's still pedestrian investigations, but I think-
When you say abolished, then what abolished is the term?
Well, yeah, we never used the term stop and frisk in the Philadelphia Police Department.
Okay, got you.
So, I mean, it is a Terry stop that we call a pedestrian investigation. I think there's a misconception and always has been, and I think I know where some of it arises from, that we ever use that term in Philly PD? We have never. We've never had a policy about stop and frisk. We have a policy that outlines how you're supposed to do a number of stops, including traffic investigations, and pedestrian investigations are one. We've never, ever had a policy on stop and frisk. And to be fair to you, there's a lot of people who thought we did, and we didn't. There's a sister-
So, there is no stop and frisk policy here in the city of Philadelphia?
There's a policy on pedestrian investigations and how you conduct them.
There are pedestrian investigations?
Right, and, but, 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 Councilman. The problem is, is that people were under the mistaken belief that that was a crime-fighting strategy that we use. That is a law enforcement tool that the United States Supreme Court in 1968 said that any law enforcement officer can use. So, let me get to the other part of your question. In terms of those numbers, those numbers, as I said when I left the federal judge's court, are abysmal. They're bad. They're really bad. But a lot of it does not stem in our analysis necessarily from the stop being illegal. It's because of the fact that we were not documenting properly and articulating properly. So, we have a form which compels, it is not a drop-down box, it is not a check-to-block. The officer actually has a space where they have to write why they stopped me, for example. They have to articulate that, and in many instances, those numbers represent cases where we did not adequately do that.
Okay.
They also account for cases where something as simple as the supervisor has an obligation to sign that report indicating that they reviewed it, and they did it. You made mention of a spike, and it actually was in the third quarter when we went from 30-something to 60-something percent. We now know that that in large part had to do with, believe it or not, in some cases, overdocumentation that was incorrect. And what I mean by that is if you witness me make a narcotics transaction, what we were seeing is our officers were creating a 7548A report, which is for pedestrian investigation, and they don't have to do that, because they already had probable cause to make an arrest. And so, once we cleared that up, that dropped in the fourth quarter. In answer to your question about what are we doing going forward, some of it I answered, and the councilwoman's question about, actually, a lot of it I answered, but I'll explain it again, it's the oversight that we really got to get better at. And so, we've made that a part of our comstat accountability process. We instituted other measures with the captain where they're on the front end of this. We're making sure that people who don't do it right will be held accountable, but we believe that's going to be the case, not going to be the case. We're going to have training with that. And to be blunt with you, one of the other things that my commanders know, and I wasn't trying to be a particular kind of person, and I won't say it in here, but when I told them and I told the judge that if there's a particular commander that doesn't get it right, for whatever reason, they will accompany me-
Thank you.
-along with the judge, and they can explain it. And I guarantee you, those things will have significant measures when you have to explain as a captain why your command-
Did you do it?
...didn't get it right.
Understood. And the second part of my question, and I remember asking this question last year when Commissioner Ramsey was here, it was prior to you taking helm, but one of the reasons why I respected him so much is that he stepped up to the plate to address the issue of excessive force.
Right.
Called on the DOJ and the COPS program to come in and do a review, and the stats that I read based upon that report is that between 2007 and 2014, there were 394 officer-involved shootings in the city with an annual average of about 49. The victims were most often about 20 years old, and 81% were black, 9% were Hispanic, and 8% were white. While the bulk of people shot by Philadelphia police were black, whites were shot were more likely to be unarmed at the time. There's nearly 61% of the black suspects shot by police were unarmed compared to 25% of white. And so, give us an overview on the recommendations, what recommendations? There were 91 from the DOJ COPS report that have been enacted since this report, and what course of action specifically are we taking in terms of corrective action to make sure we do a better job on our end as relates to engaging suspects and making sure that if there is going to be a shooting, and you're the professional, you know better than I do, and I know you all have a very stressful and serious job, but how do we address this to make sure as we move forward, we're improving?
Okay, so, first of all, I'm glad to report that over the last two years, we've seen a precipitous drop in our police-related shootings. In fact, since 13, calendar year 13, unfortunately, 11 people were killed that year, and in 14, there were four, and last year, there were two. Obviously, we want there to be none, but one of the things we're doing from that report, well, there's a number of things, but reality-based training is a significant one. And so, we're cycling people through this reality-based training, making sure that we make sound decisions, as I indicated before, related to both de-escalation, tactics is a big one, making sure that we don't-
Is that tactics?
Tactics, making sure of, because a lot of times, the shooting itself, at the time the trigger's pulled, is a legal shooting. But the question is, did an officer put yourself unnecessarily in a situation where you didn't have the adequate cover that you could have had? It's all split-second decisions in many cases, but tactics are a big one. Trying to equip our officers with the necessary tools, this is why we have so many people carrying tasers now, one more weapon they have in their arsenal before you have to go to that. But the de-escalation training, the reality-based training is a big one. Just working, we actually every day put out quips on police radio, and a quip is just a short little message that kind of gets in your subconscious about, you know, make sure you use tactics, even the life you save might be your own, and everybody's life matters, everybody should go home, and all these other things. There's a myriad of things that we're doing. I think the numbers reflect the fact that we're getting a lot of it right. In addition to that, we actually have, from the Police Advisory Commission, we have the president who sits on our use-of-force review board as a voting member. And so, you also get a bit of a reality check too when you listen to some of these cases and you listen to what some of these officers have to deal with. But, look, again, there's always room for improvement. We acknowledge that. Commissioner Ramsey acknowledged that. I think he would tell you that the staff he had with him, he didn't come to that conclusion on his own. It wasn't just his decision, it was a group decision, because even across this nation, again, save for some jurisdictions who may be a little conservative, for the most part, police chiefs acknowledge that we've got work to do.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman. Just in terms of tactics?
You're like whale, you're like off the 13 minutes.
All right, sure. Just one last small part, and I'll wrap up. With all due respect, Council President, I just wanted to make sure, is there cultural sensitivity training as well as mental health training as part of the tactics?
Yes, it is.
That's a part of the training?
Absolutely.
And LGBTQ, I think it's Q.
Q.
As well, how you deal with transgenders when you come up on the scene? Is that a part of the training as well?
We have an extensive policy on that. This gentleman seated to my right is actually our liaison to our LGBTQ community, and so, we take that very seriously. I mean, as evidenced by the fact that you have someone of the deputy commissioner rank who is a liaison. We did not relegate that to a police officer. We have that at a deputy commissioner two-star level. So, it's very important to us, and so, we're connected with all those issues.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, sir.
With all due respect, thank you. It might be tomorrow when I get a chance to come back, but thank you.
All right, thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good almost afternoon. How are you?
How are you doing, Councilwoman?
I want to join the chorus in also offering congratulations-
Thank you.
...to the new administration, to your positions, and-
Thank you so much.
...certainly wish you well, and thank you for being so accessible and for the great job that you all do. And I do want to add on, I know Councilwoman Parker mentioned some of our Northwest leadership from the police department, but I did want to add in Captain Craighead from the 39th District, and also Inspector Washington, who do just a phenomenal job. All of them do a phenomenal job, are accessible. I'm constantly in touch with them, and they respond, and I appreciate it. So, I just wanted to be on record-
Thank you for saying that.
...and say that, absolutely. I wanted to switch gears just slightly and talk about something that was brought up briefly before, but the police presence on commercial corridors. And I want to specifically talk about Broad and Alley, and I know the Council President also mentioned Broad and Erie, and also Germantown and Shelton. And as we're working to rebuild our commercial corridors, it becomes very difficult to do when there's excessive loitering, when there's drug activity, you know, when there's a number of blight issues, which at first glance, don't appear to be related to criminal activity but are part of sort of like the fabric or the scene of what's been set at some of these corridors. When you look at, let's say, Broad and Alley as an example, this is, I think, the second or third busiest commercial corridor transit hub in the city of Philadelphia. And so, you have 10, 15,000, I don't know, some, you know, huge amount of folks who are traveling through Broad and Alley every single day, and whereas we should be able to develop it into a place where people want to stop, they want to dine, often, I feel like people want to just go because of some of the activity in the neighborhood. So, can you talk about the police presence specifically related to commercial corridors?
So, I know you mentioned Broad and Alley at least two or three times, and-
Yes.
...I know they, for a long time, had a footbeat out designated to Broad and Alley, but clearly, from the conversations today, these commercial corridors are something we've got to work a little more on to get appropriate level of response that people feel comfortable with. I will say that in some of these corridors, we are also able to leverage the policing of SEPTA as well. We've got a great working relationship with Captain, I mean, Commissioner Nastel, Chief Nastel. And so, in places like that, in many instances, he will put a car or two in those areas, but clearly, by the volume of people in some of the areas that at least was mentioned twice, we're going to need more than just one footbeat in figuring out what that looks like. And I'm talking about beyond Broad and Alley, and I realize you're saying that.
Absolutely. And can you also add in about cameras in the commercial quarters and how that could play in? Because one of the things that I've heard from some of the officers is, you know, we don't want to harass people, obviously, but if someone says they're waiting for a bus and every bus is going by, you know, three, four, five times, they're not waiting for the bus. And so, cameras are a way to identify, you know, who is sort of up to other things and who's actually waiting for transportation. And so, how does all of that fit into what it is that, you know, we need to see at Broad and Alley?
Yeah, and Councilwoman, a lot of that dovetails into the Council President's question about real-time monitoring.
Yes.
And unfortunately, our inability to do that in a perfect world, and it wouldn't have to be perfect, but in close to perfect world, we would have the ability to do that, and we'd be able to see what you're talking about. Obviously, even in instances like Broad and Alley where I know we have a footbeat, that person's not going to be in one place, and not necessarily with the thousands of people that traverse that area to be able to notice those one or two people. But again, I'm not opposed to the ability to have that real-time monitoring, and if we can do that and that will help us, great. But clearly, I also come back to, if we can get more people in our doors, it will enable our captains, because to be fair to them, I'm certainly not going to push it back on them while I'm sitting here, to have the resources to put in commercial corridors. You know, from some of the feedback that you get, that you'll go to a community meeting and they're talking about quality of life issues in their neighborhood, and so, you know a lot of captains are going to be responsive to that.
Sure.
And so, if they have to then move their people around, then that's what they're going to do in order to suppress criminal activity or quality of life issues in other places. I'm not saying that there are no people in these commercial corridors, but maybe not what we could have.
Okay.
And so, as we look to get a couple more hundred people up to our staffing levels, I can guarantee you, we could start to satisfy some of those concerns.
That would be great, and also, just to go back to the Council President's point earlier about Baltimore, one of the things that they did is didn't, you know, when it came to monitoring for the cameras, it was not police personnel, as I remember, but it was actually retired personnel or other security professionals.
Right.
So, it wasn't exactly, you know, folks who were in the police department, which, you know, was a little, I guess, a little more cost-effective.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, exactly. It is more cost-effective. I mean, probably, Deputy Calder, you know, we start at 47, 48,000, but by the time you're a 10-year police officer, you're in the close to 60-something. So, to have someone making that kind of money monitoring a camera is probably not the most cost-effective way of doing it. But again, we'd be for all that if we could get the resources to support it.
Okay, very good. Can you talk briefly about, you know, as the Commissioner, I'm sorry, of the Police Department, what your philosophy is regarding community policing, bikes, police mini-stations? I heard some of it, but I'd like to hear a little bit more of a comprehensive overview of where you are on all of these different things, because with different commissioners, there's different policies, different ideas and thoughts in terms of what works and what doesn't work. So, particularly around, again, bikes, police mini-stations, walking patrols, PDX, and all of these things under the community policing umbrella.
So, obviously, over the last 20-something years, you know, this community policing term has brought up a lot of conversation, but in its mere essence in terms of connecting with communities, regardless of what you call it, I'm all for that. I believe in it. I believe it actually makes the job of a police officer, even in some of our toughest and most challenged areas, easier. You know who's who first and foremost, and secondly, people want to help you, and even to the degree that they can make you safer, they will. It makes your job easier. But more importantly, about footbeats, absolutely. I know our new police officers are less- I know our new police officers are less than enamored of the notion of coming out and walking beats, but that's what they've been doing, that's what they will continue to do for the foreseen future. And not big proponent of mini-stations, I'll be perfectly honest. And I'll tell you why. Because when you plan a police officer in a station like that, it does not give you the same flexibility, and it also lends itself to the notion that the rest of the police believe that that's one or two people's responsibility connecting with community. So you subconsciously send a message to the rest of your department that that is not your job to connect, that is the officer who works at the mini-station's job. And so we don't want that kind of mindset. Look, I'm pragmatic. I don't necessarily believe that of the sixty-two-hundred or so, sixty-one-hundred-plus that we have now, that we're going to have everybody be Mr. Community or Mrs. Community. But to the degree that we can have people who understand that this is the department's mindset, this is what we believe in, this is what we know, will ultimately make significant inroads both for police community relations, driving down crime and quality of life issues, that that's what we're about. And it's not about being soft on crime like some people want to believe. It has absolutely nothing to do with that. It has everything to do with understanding that you leverage and maximize your resources in every way that you possibly can.
Okay. And bikes?
I love them.
So we'll see more.
Need more people to put on them, though.
Okay, all right.
Need more people to put on them. And, and we just put, I know we just put a class through just about a week ago, and I think they just finished up or finishing up. So we still training people.
Okay.
One thing that is more a message to my personnel than it is to the members of council is that if you take training like that, your expectation is that you're going to ride the bike.
Okay.
And that you didn't get the training, and now you're going to park the bike. And because that, now you've got a certificate to ride, but you don't want to ride. So, or that you're going to ride even when it's cold.
So will we see an increase in bike patrols, do you suspect?
You won't see a significant increase until I can get bodies in those cars first, Councilwoman.
Okay.
Again, I mean, we are down at levels that is rivals twenty-something years ago. And so we're doing, I mean, that old buzz phrase of doing more with less, but this is not a business where you can get away with that for so long.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Good evening, Council President. Thank you. Commissioner.
Councilman.
Welcome.
Thank you.
As Commissioner, and I know, as you heard, you know, members individually are going to speak on their own behalf, but, you know, we are so proud to see you in the top spot, you know, coming from, you know, the ranks and rank file
Thank you so much.
of our great Philadelphia Police Department. So, you know, it's an honor, and, you know, I want to say thank you for what you do in my district. Thank you for listening. Thank you for helping where we can and making, you know, our, you know, the residents in my district, you know, feel a little more comfortable in its policing. I, too, have some great and new captains that are in the Sixth District from the fifteenth, the eighth, and the twenty-fourth, and I'm excited about working with the new innovative way of policing and redeploying of our officers. You know, the Fifteenth Police District, as you know, and we've had many conversations over the past five years, is the largest in territory district in the city of Philadelphia, the most dense district in the city of Philadelphia, and has the most incidents in the city of Philadelphia. And incidents, obviously, vary in their categories, but, you know, quality of life, I think, transcends every single neighborhood. And, you know, the rapid response in your priority is, you know, citywide as well. The Fifteenth Police District building itself as a public property, I'm sure you're aware of, and I hear complaints on a daily basis almost, and I'm going to be advocating for a new police district building itself.
I support that.
So I want to put that on the record. The, you know, Commissioner supports a new building in the Fifteenth Police District.
And the Twenty-second.
So noted.
And the Thirty-ninth.
Right. So that's going to be my advocacy in this budget, a new police district for the Fifteenth. And I think the conditions for our officers are deplorable. The amount of money that we spend is irresponsible, I think, over the years because we kept kicking the can down, down the road year after year. I don't believe it is open or friendly to the community. You know, we're talking about having that kind of interaction, you know, with our police officers and our community. But I don't think there's even a place for that in the district itself. I think the, and we were in 2016, not 1916, and, or, or, or building is a health hazard, you know, not just for the community but the officers. So I want to improve the working conditions, you know, for our officers. So with that being said, you know, I have two PAL centers, and I know the PAL does, you know, the PAL does great work with our community, so I want to encourage, you know, keep, keep our kids engaged and enrolled in our PAL centers. The officers do a fantastic job, and, you know, hitting our children early is, I think, critical to developing that kind of relationship. So when you're training our officers for cultural and neighborhood issues and, you know, the different experiences to each neighborhood, I think we should think about taking those trainings to the PAL centers so our children can understand at a younger age as they grow up in the communities that they live in. So that's just a suggestion as we move forward. Couple quick questions for, well, not quick questions, but questions regarding the, are you still having trouble hiring police officers?
Absolutely.
Okay. And what are the barriers to entry into service?
So we, we've tried to pinpoint exactly what it is. There were some who believed it was the sixty credit requirement. I will tell you candidly, we have in the pipeline a request to the Civil Service Commission to raise the hiring age to twenty-two across the board in dispense with the sixty credits. Because first and foremost, I need bodies in those cars.
Can you repeat that? You're going to raise?
So instead of being nineteen with sixty credits or military experience in Explorers, we would, you would be twenty-two, and it really doesn't affect a lot of people because in our last class we checked, there's only two people that are twenty-one. And all those people wouldn't get in anyway. So I can't tell you how many times I've got people who stopped me and my staff, say, you know, I want to be a police officer, I don't have sixty credits. And this is not, look, I'm an education person, and this is not revisionist history. I don't know for a fact that this is the reason, but I do know that there are a number of people who stopped me, and there are people who even seated at this table who, and certainly in our department, who have master's degrees, and I have some working for me who have law degrees, who did not have their degree when they started, but they thought enough of education later. So we are having a significant problem. Again, not laying it completely at the feet of sixty credits, but I've got to do something. Again, twenty-two years is how far you've got to go back to see this level of manpower that we have. And so I'd be irresponsible if I didn't try to see what's going on. So if we can get that passed as soon as possible, that is something we're going to do. We had explored some other options that I'm not going to bore you with right now, but I know the mayor's on board with this, and so is the FOP president. And so we want to get people in our department. And so the thinking for twenty-two, for me, is seemingly most people who graduate at seventeen or eighteen are doing something between that age, which means that now you've got some life's experience, maybe your thinking's a little different. It's not casting aspersions against those who came on at nineteen, because I know some dynamic people who did that. But not everybody at nineteen might be prepared for this. So at twenty-two, I think, would be a solid age. You still need a high school diploma or equivalent, and obviously, you've still got to pass the background.
Right, no doubt about it. And it is great, and I was keenly aware of
So you can advocate for that.
the conversation. So, and I will be advocating, and I think a lot of members here will be advocating as well, especially Councilman Johnson. But I wanted to be part of the record, you know, to let people know, because when you have a budget of four hundred officers that are always going to be vacant on a continual basis, I mean, that seems to be the focus instead of some of the things that you're trying to do on the background. Are those standards that exist now justified in today's, today's age, and that are up to date? Were they, those standards for qualifications for
You're talking about the sixty credits or going to twenty-two?
Sixty credits, yeah.
Sixty credits is still the standard right now. So we've got another phase of hiring we're looking to do, and I think it closes in May or something like that. And so I don't know that we'll get it done for this one, we're trying. And to be fair to even the folks who have to approve it with civil service and other places, I mean, we kind of waffled a little bit because was hoping to do something different without completely getting ready to sixty credits, but I understood that having a two-tier age system might create some legal hurdles. So rather than even go through that, so I own this part in saying that, you know, we, this is what I acknowledge, that, you know, I was the stumbling block in trying to make sure we had this done, but I think we need to do this to see what it will yield for us. And so I just believe that we, first and foremost, like I said, we got to get boots on the ground, more so than any crime strategy, is what's going to be most effective. And then you work from there. And you can do all the things that have been mentioned here, commercial corridors and any number of other things, but you got to have the requisite number of police officers. And in a city like this, with the issues that we are confronted with each and every day, we need a police department at minimum of sixty-five hundred.
Now, is, two questions, and I'll, I'm going to have to get back at you. Is there any way to phase in the requirements, possibly, be a part of the conversation?
To phase in?
To phase in, you know, the change in requirements.
I think you can, Councilman, and that's what we're trying to do in essence. It's just that you got to get that approval first. I don't think it's going to be a major stumbling block. And again, I own the fact that for the folks who have to take a solid look at this, I kind of was a little whimsical about whether, should we do it this way, should we do it that way? But now that we've kind of decided as a staff that this is what we need to do. Look, I have my reservations about going backwards on an educational requirement, I'll be honest with you. But my first concern is the safety of the people who live and visit and work in the city. And so we got to take care of that first.
Absolutely. Now, lastly, the Explorers. Think there's about two hundred of them? Is that correct, or roughly?
Do we have two hundred?
But that's in the new districts.
Yeah, you're probably talking about the decentralized ones, the ones that are now in every district. Yeah, some districts have more, some have less. I don't have the exact number, but
So when you talk about bike patrols and in trying to increase the training for bike patrols, obviously, you need people, maybe some supervised explorers being trained in some bikes just as a visibility
For presence?
For presence.
Yeah, I think, look, it's a thought, I mean, it might be some liability issues with young people, but
No citizens arrests, but, you know, just having a presence.
But thank you also
On commercial quarters.
Okay, all right. So, no, that's great. And I think you see your, you still got yours.
Awesome, all right. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Good afternoon. I also want to thank you for always keeping it real. I think it's important that, for the Police Department with the political, the public perceptions, that we try to keep it as real for folks. So I really appreciate the candor which you bring to this job.
Thank you.
I think it's necessary. Just want to put in my pitch, I know that the new administration hasn't made a decision about what it's going to do with the Police Oversight Committee, and I know there are discussions happening. And I must tell you, in my participation there with Councilman Jones, Councilman Heenan's also on it, having the committee of folks that were around the table led by Dean Epps, who, you know, is just a tremendous lawyer and someone highly skilled, I think it's hugely important in helping us build that public credibility that we need. So I want to put in my pitch, not that she wants to continue to work and do this kind of work, but I really appreciated the folks around the table, the diversity, the candor around, obviously, the federal, the Justice Department report, but just even figuring out as advocates how we could be more supportive to the district, to the police district. So, you know, just want to make my pitch in for that. Something that, you know, very frustrated, you and I had a conversation in your previous role, really felt that Ramsey did just not want to create a plan for it, the open-air markets, drug markets. I represent Kessington. There's a national discussion going on around the heroin addiction. We all agree we can't arrest our way out of it. So how are we going to utilize some of this reform in some of our criminal justice, because we can't arrest our way out of it? But what is going to be the police strategy around that? And, you know, I've publicly said I really believe there's a containment strategy, we keep it in one area. I just, you know, very complicated.
It is. And Councilwoman, you and I have had multiple conversations about this before I assumed this role even, where you astutely recognize this is such a multifaceted problem. But I think it kind of goes to even the violence issue or panel that your two colleagues seated to your right had, and the recognition that there are multiple entities, even within city government, need to be involved in all these issues. And that even from the ground, when we build this containment strategy, as you call it, it's got to, from the door, it's got to start with people beyond just the Police Department. And if we go at it from that standpoint, you know, and you say, keeping it real, this is what I do, it's what you do, is a significant underground economy in the area that you're talking about. And so you have to build in a mechanism, not only in terms of quality of life issues where people feel comfortable engaging, coming out, supporting us, but sadly, even for some of those young men, because it's mostly men and young boys, engaged in that open-air drug market, or even if it's behind closed door, they have to have some level of opportunity. And this is not being Mr. Kum Byah or soft on anything like some people might think, but it's a reality. And so we have to find a way economically even, there better be an alternative. You're pulling those guys off the corner because you know that you pull one off, somebody's going to replace them. And here's your other challenge that you probably know now from talking to your captains. There is a dynamic going on in your division that has never been seen before. We used to talk all the time about, to neighbors, well, you know, you don't have a drug dealer who's coming from West Philly, North Philly to live or sell drugs. Now you do. They're over there renting corners.
Yes.
They're renting corners. So there is not even a stigma of little whoever who looks at Mrs. Jones, looking at him out the window worrying about, now you became my local drug dealer and my nemesis, because they are selling their corners. And so that only adds to the level of complexity that we have to deal with now. But we had better, better, if we do anything, not do anything that sounds like some buzz operation, you know, some fly-by-night thing that just sounds good, that we try to satisfy people in the moment. That's a waste of your time, and it's a waste of mine, and it's disenchanted to the people that live there. They want to see something sustainable. And so I, you know I'm willing, we've had conversations even with the local SAC from the DEA, who comes from Baltimore PD, he understands this. I think you have some people, you know, you have great commanders, too, you know? So I'm going to say it for you, I know you wanted to say it, but you, you've got some great, we've got some great commanders across the city.
No one can survive our division unless they're going to be great, because they're either going to love me or
No, because you're going to get buried, and in a lot of them. And so I can't say enough about them, and I'm going to segue back to your point in a second, but I got to acknowledge these folks because one thing my friend and mentor, Charles Ramsey, used to say is he was surprised about the level of talent in Philly PD, having come from two other departments. And we are very, very proud of the men and women who wear this uniform, especially those captains and inspectors, they got a tough, tough job. So we will continue to talk, I know you've got some plans coming forward that you're going to sit down with us, but it is not going to be an easy thing to do, but we're going to be committed.
Yes. And I think that's why the issue of whether we're talking about a civilian police department that helps the issue of the cameras, you know, this issue with the cameras, whether, you know, they're being real-time viewed or not, what level of, because we've all been frustrated, you know, people have been promised cameras or whatever, what level of discussion are you having with the Streets Department? Because, you know, I went to their command center, and they got a lot of stuff going on there. You know, is this something that we should be handing off to them to kind of help with the department so there's one consistent way of doing some of this camera stuff?
Well, first of all, I do have a good relationship with their commissioner, and he's always talking to me about different things, not necessarily cameras. We've had a discussion about specific camera-related issues, but not in an overarching way like this. But, I mean, he's a great guy, as you know. And I don't know, I can't speak for another agency about what they should be dedicating to this, so I'd be remiss to do that. But as, you know, the Council President pointed out about having the possibility of others man them and to the degree that the city would have those resources, I would have to be in support of that.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to have that high-level discussion about what they're doing as they built out their system, and maybe, because it's so complicated and technical, I mean, we want you to do your job, which is policing, if there's some other things that we're learning in other departments, because we've had such a level of frustration at the police department, just, you know, not being able to like pull this trigger and get up system that we are, I think it's a good opportunity to do that, so I would strongly encourage that. I'm gonna leave it to the next round to talk a little bit about pipeline and job creation and diversity and all those other things, but I'm really interested in figuring out what the multi-state, federal jurisdictional, we did some pilots a couple of years ago, and so I think we really need to go back to some of those strategies around, you know, what's the federal responsibility for some of this stuff and the state, and I know like the feds like the cases turned over to them almost done, but we need help.
Well, I can tell you that, you know, I know for a fact that Deputy Patterson had conversations with the federal authorities about the need to be more, I don't wanna say responsive, because they are, but to limit the amount of time, and we are probably unique in the sense that we have a great working relationship with all of our federal partners, I mean, and I only know that from talking to other people, that maybe they've got a good one with one agency but not the other, but those folks come to us, they've been very instrumental in doing a lot of significant work, but I think the synergy is here now, I mean, with some of the things that are going on, we can get some work done, but again, I come back to my shameless commercial in trying to get as many people in the door, so if you know people want to be police officers, send them our way, please.
We'll have a qualification discussion.
All right, no age limit.
Okay.
Wow.
Good afternoon, Councilman Green.
Thank you, Madam Chair, good afternoon, Commissioner Ross, I want to congratulate you on your position like many of my colleagues have done.
Thank you.
I met you several years ago when I had slightly more hair as President of East Manory Neighbors, and I saw you as a captain in the 14th, and it's great to see you rise through the ranks, and also I just want to offer my condolences to you and all the members of the police department in reference to the passing of Officer Gary Harrison, he was the brother of two paternity brothers of mine, and I know you had worked with him and knew his background, and being a former prosecutor and also having two uncles who are part of the Philadelphia Police Department, I know the hard work, or I've got some in the case of the hard work that you do, and the hard work that all the members of the Philadelphia Police Department do on a daily basis, so I just want to offer that on the record, and I also want to get some perspective, considering the hard and challenging job that police officers do every day, what type of supports are provided for police officers, considering that you said earlier that right now you're at your lowest volume in some time reference to number of officers, what type of internal opportunities are provided for officers to deal with the stresses of the job, especially when you have more work to do with less officers on the beat?
So, Councilman, first of all, thank you for mentioning a colleague of mine who I worked with some 20 years ago, Gary was a special, special police officer and a special man, and took his responsibilities very, very seriously, and, I mean, was probably one of the hardest-working people, and I know that sounds like a cliche or an old bromance, but he really, really was, and irrespective of where you assigned him, despite being shot twice in the line of duty on two different occasions, Gary gave his all, and so it is a tremendous loss for not only the people of the Accident Investigation Division but for the police department, so first and foremost, thank you for acknowledging that. As with regard to your second question, and it's one of our strategies or goals, this is essentially what is officer wellness, and so we recognize that policing has long been a stressful occupation, but it's getting more stressful given the environment that we work in nationally, and you heard me say that there's some things that I would have to stipulate and/or agree to that are problematic in the profession, but at the same token, you know, getting wholesale indictments against police officers, gotta have a significant amount of stress on them on top of what they see, some of the things that police officers and soldiers, I would imagine, and firefighters see, the human being's not supposed to see this stuff every day, and when you add to that, you know, you, it didn't come up today, but, you know, in terms of trauma centers saving lives and so forth and so on in this city, there's a missing component that the doctors, that those surgeons, or those surgeons will talk about, is those police officers that do something we ask them to do that most cities don't, which is scoop and run. We pick up gunshot victims, I don't know how many lives our police officers probably save, because they don't wait for fire rescue, and the trauma surgeons who are very, very adept and skilled at saving lives will tell you that they would not be able to do some of that, were it not for the fact that Philadelphia PD does not have a policy that dictates that they wait for fire rescue like some major cities do, so, but I say that to say this, all these things lend themselves to the trauma and officer wellness issues that we have to address, and we have to make sure there are mechanisms, now we have an employee assistance program, we work with Penn Behavioral Health to make sure officers have this, but the challenge sometimes is that this is a profession where many of us feel like we're supposed to have your chests out all the time, and you're supposed to have this level of strength and intestinal fortitude, and you can't talk about how you really feel, so we've gotta work on this, and this is why we've made this one of our significant goals that we want to work on, so that we recognize that men and women that do this job every day and how their wellness is important.
Also want to follow up on some questions that were presented by Councilmember Skamen Johnson in reference to the interaction that the police department had with various communities. From my understanding, the police department, and I think this even started under previous Commissioner Ramsey, have started to do some training in reference to dealing with people who are on the autism spectrum, I've heard from various perspectives that that's something that's currently going on, if you could provide me a record, what status is that training and what steps are being taken right now?
You want to answer that?
At the police academy at both the recruit and now in-service levels, it's something that's abundantly aware to us that we have to do more in those areas, that we want to make sure that, we don't want our officers to be doctors, but we want them to be able to recognize signs and talk to people in the right way to not ever escalate a situation, like the whole point of showing up is to make things better, and we want that conveyed to every officer who takes a seat in the academy wanting to be a cop, so not only autism, but any type of, we deal with returning citizens from the military service, people who come with certain medical issues that we want our cops to not only recognize, but then know what the next steps are to make sure that we're not making things worse, and then we take the steps to make them better. In addition to any of the illnesses, we've gone to great lengths to put in our fair and impartial policing, dealing with any types of implicit and explicit biases, and that has to do with medical conditions too, sometimes people would look at somebody and assume that they know that there's something going on and not necessarily recognizing as medical, so one of the things that's pointed out is that those biases, everybody has, it's what you do with the biases, and our recruits are learning that now to say, that you're gonna have biases based on your experience, they're not necessarily bad, it's how you handle that bias and how you handle your understanding of what you're witnessing that makes our officers better prepared to serve those who are the most vulnerable at that time.
In addition to recruits, what type of training are you providing to more seasoned officers in reference to dealing with people who have learning differences like autism, or as you said, like post-traumatic stress issues that some of our returning veterans may have?
That has been put into our reality-based training, we are creating scenarios that are real-life, based on instances that have happened with our police officers themselves, some of them have to do with either mental illness or a medical illness that causes them to either not react the way we expect them to, if you're dealing with somebody who's involved in a criminal situation, they're likely to react in a way based on your instructions. If they're not criminal or they're in a medical situation, we're teaching our officers to make a tactical decision if they're alone on the highway, for instance, and there's nobody next to them, you don't have to necessarily confront them immediately, you can take that time to figure out what it is that's going on, that way, nothing that you do would precipitate them feeling like they have to do something quickly, so it's really trying to teach our officers, no matter what the circumstances is, that the first option is to start de-escalating the situation, get the necessary mental or medical help they need. We have over 2,000 officers now who are trained in CIT training, they're our in-service personnel, police radio has every tour who's working that is CIT-trained, so any situation that we're dispatched to where that police radio gets the call, it may lend itself to somebody who's in a crisis, they'll dispatch those officers who have that additional training to make sure that they're giving them every level of help that they can, and getting them to the appropriate authorities to help them further.
And just to close, the bell has rung, how often is that reality-based training provided to officers?
We're in our first cycle now, so we do about 10 officers a day, it'll take some time to get everybody through it, but we found that if we use large numbers, our officers wouldn't all get to fully participate and do it, not just watching it, but actually go through the scenarios themselves, so we've been doing it, we had about, got about 450 officers through so far this year since 2016 started, with the schedule still pretty ambitious of three days a week, and we're looking to move it to two tours to get more done as well.
And not only that, Councilman, that training is so involved that, you know, even for the trainers, it takes its toll on them physically, so you kinda gotta work it out in that manner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Skemen.
Thank you very much, Council President, and thank you very much again, Commissioner Ross, for talking a little bit about the relationship between civil forfeiture and the stop-and-frisk policies, or the pedestrian investigation policies, and would love to be able to follow up and work with your department a little bit on that.
That'd be great.
Yeah, that would be very helpful, and I'm sure my colleagues on public safety would be more than interested in that. One of the things I've appreciated about your department in the past has been how seriously you take it when police officers have situations of misconduct, and the department has swiftly moved to hold them accountable for that, but I know that there's been a number of situations in which the department has taken action for officers involved in serious misconduct, but that they have been restored to service through an arbitration process. As you move forward, have you looked at what the arbitration process exactly is that allows that to continue, are there reflections on your department about how to address that a little bit better, and ensure that the arbitration process is reflective of the department's standards and practices?
Sure, so, there's a couple things, I think, first and foremost, you're right, you know, under Commissioner Ramsey and even before that, we don't want corrupt officers in our ranks, and I think it's important to point out, neither do the other officers, they don't want that either, I mean, they, those who value what's on this patch, honor service and integrity, they don't want people in their ranks that don't belong here. I think, first of all, the arbitration process is somewhat complicated in that some of it is beyond our purview, but we work very hard to try to make sure that, first and foremost, that the cases that we present are solid enough so that, you know, you're not having people who come back unnecessarily on some little subtle nuance where we didn't complete something in a timely fashion, but I also think that there's a bit of a misconception, and I had it myself, about the number of officers that actually get their jobs back. There are a lot of officers who were fired over the last several years, and it's not that large of a percentage get their jobs back, you tend to hear about some of the most high-profile ones, and even within the arbitration process, and now Deputy Coulter has it, but I had it for the better part of four or five years as first deputy, there are parts of the process that, particularly where there's not necessarily a termination, where the FOP might win part of it, but they don't win the biggest part of it, and so it's nuanced in nature, but it's such a complex issue, but we try to stave off as many problems as we can by having early warnings, signs and signals to the degree that we can of problem officers, but more importantly, I think our biggest push is to make sure our investigations are timely and that they're done correctly, and that we do everything possible that we don't leave a stone unturned where somebody sneaks in the back door on this, but it's never gonna be, well, I shouldn't say never, it's not at this point, a situation where we have that degree of control over the arbitration process, there have been people who...
Are you analyzing kind of the findings, is there like openings that you can identify that might help understand better what's happening in that process that allows the more egregious situations to occur?
We've done that, we will continue to do that, there are some cases where we, and small in nature, I think, where we've able to identify that, okay, maybe we didn't close the door on this piece, and this is not suggesting that investigators did anything wrong, but it just left a little bit of a gap for someone to come back, but in many cases, it's, it just defies logic why people get their jobs back, and you...
Is there any opening in the next contract process to review the arbitration proceedings or that area?
Well, I mean, that's something that would have to come up in the next negotiation, which would be next year, and I'm...
I mean, ahead of that negotiation, I wonder if that's an opportunity to very closely review that process to understand what exactly is going on, where the locus of disagreement is, and what can be done to kind of address that.
Yeah, so let me say this, so, again, that would be a part of the next collective bargaining process to make any wholesale, and I don't know that that's gonna happen, I would at best be cautiously optimistic, and I wouldn't even go that far, but let me just share something with you very quickly, as you ran out of time unfortunately, is...
I think Matt was doing a freshman hazing routine, actually, no, I think we can continue.
Oh.
I have more time, is that right, Council President?
No, you have a whole minute left.
I have one whole minute, and I will not waste it.
You want to reserve that for another question, or you want me to answer it?
Yes, actually, I will reserve that for another question, because we can follow up with that. My other question has to do a little bit with the council hearings that we had on, with Councilman Johnson about youth gun violence, and we had a little bit of back and forth, but just wanted to follow up a little bit more, and it relates back to Councilman Green's questions about training, but in particular, I know that the department has identified with youth in particular, this issue about retaliation and specific things, and one of the things I was sharing is, is that in the way that the department reviewed, the Department of Justice's review of police shootings, and was aggressive about documenting, analyzing, looking at the cause of it, and significantly reduced the number of police shootings as of December 2015, I'm wondering if that approach is being taken at to look at the specifics and uniqueness of working with juveniles in particular, and especially around the area of retaliation, so the U.S. Department of Justice has started a level of study that looks at retaliation and the psychology of it with juveniles, I think one of the most distinctive things about working with young people is not to recognize that they're just simply victims or it's by age, but that there's a whole psychology that goes into that, and I'm specifically interested in the ways in which your department is aggressively looking at specifics around handling juveniles and young people, and maybe very specific situations, and whether that Department of Justice report provides any venues or openings or opportunities for additional trainings for the department.
So, unless I'm mistaken, I think you're referring to that retaliatory violence insight project that was done by George Mason University, and so in reading some of that, it appears that some of the officers felt like they were from Memphis and Lowell, Massachusetts, more prepared to deal with or understand some of the dynamics of the mindset that go behind retaliation. I will tell you that we have not drilled down to the point where we're looking so much at juveniles as it is from a holistic standpoint of this retaliatory thing, not necessarily dealing with the psychology of it, but dealing with the operational side of it for us. Now, I will tell you, as now a member of major city chiefs organization, not so much Lowell, because they're not a member, but Memphis, I can have a discussion at length with them to see what that looks like, because I think it was kinda still in this exploratory notion phase even there in those two cities, but it's something worth looking at, and again, I mentioned before, I know from a hospital standpoint, the ER, Temple looks at a lot of that and has those discussions, so I'm not opposed to looking at that, and so when I go next, not next, in May, you know, we have our meeting in New York, I will ask the chief of Memphis what that project really felt like, beyond what's on paper, and see what it feels like, and we'll go from there.
Well, as the Chair of Children and Youth, and, you know, just having seen so many studies about young men of color in particular, who are young, but are constantly perceived as being adults, and the treatment of them immediately into the adult sphere, when we know that from a brain development perspective, from a child psychology perspective, from an experiential perspective, that they are children in fact, and that they don't make rational decisions because they are not rational, they are not fully formed adults who've had a level of experience to be able to do these things, so it is definitely my interest, you know, to work with your department, I know that we go, your department goes around to a number of different schools and, you know, provides opportunities for people to get to know the department, but I think that on the flip end of it, in order for that to reach its, you know, fullest potential, it is so important for us as our science is evolving, as our psychology is evolving around young people, that the department take an extremely proactive, aggressive approach about recognizing how juveniles think, especially in times of high stress, when there are, you know, gut things that are going, when there's chaos around, that a department that's deeply trained in juvenile psychology can often help reduce, it seems like, from... help reduce, it seems like, from, from many child development experts saying, that a department that's trained in this area could help address retaliation, uh, calm down situations, continue to de-escalate, but do it from a specific juvenile perspective. So, thank you.
Yeah, and you bring up a very good point from the juvenile brain development, because it, should some of these children, and invariably some of them have experienced some significant level of trauma, that development, we know, as you already suggested, stops at that age. And so recognizing that, and that, well, you may be thinking you're looking at, you know, even a 17-year-old, you might be talking about someone who's 13 in terms of developmental years. And so all those things are, are things we will take a look at, and I will have that discussion with the chief to see what he or she thinks about, because I, they've made a transition, and so I have to see who that chief is now.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Real, real quickly, um, and I agree, I'm concerned, when you say development, about stunning growth. At 16, I experienced that, I was with someone that was murdered. I hope I'm still not 16, uh, in my, my, my mental growth, because that would be a problem for me. Um, but, I would, I wanna shift to two things. One, the drop program and how that's impacted your ranks. If you've gotten through that large number of seasoned officers that we lost to the drop program, and how your, how your promotions have gone, and whether that's moved. And then, um, I know in the last collective bargaining agreement, uh, police officers are allowed to live outside of the city after five years, and if that has in any large way, uh, been taken advantage of.
Sure. So, and, and I'll let Deputy Coulter give the specific numbers, but I, I think we've gotten to the point where the lion's share of those who were going out in the drop have left. Uh, you know, we had an extension because of the papal visit. I think we're down to like 70-something, what, what is that number?
Yes, we only have, um, in fiscal '17, 75 officers slated to go out in the drop, as well as 19 civilian employees, compared to 250, 230 the year before. So we were losing them at a much higher rate, which really gives us hope that with an effective recruitment and retention policy, we can get more police officers in cars, because this is the lowest number we'll have experienced in the last four or five years of people exiting. So, um, it did take a big toll on us, losing that many officers, even though we knew that they were going. Our inability to get people in those seats has really been magnified because of their exit.
And, and so, uh, the, the, the problem with the drop, and I'm not weighing in on the politics of it, is in that last phase, so many of our officers thought it was going away. And so we had a significant number of people who I don't think really wanted to leave when they did. And so that really hurt us for the last couple of years, and this is in large part why we've got the numbers that we have. And, I mean, because this is the first time we, we have, I think it's 96 or 98 people that are in the academy in total. And so we used to graduate classes of that size. And so I think we have a little over 800 people, to answer to your second question, who live outside the city now, which is a little bit more than I thought it would have been, to be perfectly honest with you. But, uh, I mean, so all those things, you know, there's the, the jury's out about what impact that has on other aspects of policing, I don't know. Certainly they have the right to do that.
So I, I respect the collective bargaining, right? But I can tell you, on inner-city blocks, when, on my block, there's an off-duty police officer, they're not allowed to serve in their home districts. But when she comes out the car and has her service revolver slung over her shoulder, and them young kids are on the corner, they quiet down a little bit. And I like that calming effect that a residential police officer has.
Sure.
Um, and so, that's just my two cents.
No, I, I, I hear you.
Finally, um, we're, I am going to, and along with my colleagues on the camera issue, I'd like to put a surveillance camera on every commercial corridor that has a particular higher level of criminal activity in and around certain types of businesses. And that's one of the things I'd like to explore, and the reason that is, is we've been, ever since Shane Montgomery and his disappearance, been struggling with trying to increase the number of private cameras that sign up to SafeCam. But I think there is a responsibility we have for public safety, and as they voluntarily do whatever they're gonna do, that we can take charge and put these cameras in key hotspots, commercial corridors particularly, sometimes where there are stop and frisks, where you tend to see higher spikes of crime, and take control of that, so that to, um, Council President Clark's thing, you don't have to worry about a witness. You don't have to worry about somebody coming in to testify. You have sometimes the ability to have electronic witness that is fearless. Uh, and unfortunately, in our evaluation of the criminal justice, since I was down in the arraignment court in CJC, with these cameras now, we're seeing graphic, you know, perpetrations, uh, perpetrating criminals, shooting people. And, but for sure, you can't explain away what we just saw on that camera, and you can't intimidate away what we saw on that camera. So the more we have, um, and I agree with my colleagues, some of them armed with eyes so that we can pre, prevent that criminal activity as opposed to document. So, I, I would hope you would be supportive of having them on commercial corridors.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell. I don't believe you've gone yet.
Thank you. I'm gonna try to sit here long enough to get my question in today. One of those days, Mr. President, sorry. But, uh, let me say, uh, to our Commissioner, and certainly to Deputy Commissioner Coulter, you all know she was captain in the 16th, and certainly to the, our new Deputy Commissioner Patterson, thank you all for all that you do. I am surprised about how popular these cameras are and how important. We've seen a few recently, and our people are just overjoyed. And, uh, we gotta thank them, because that helps keep us in office too, when they say, oh yes, look what you got done. But seriously, we're very, very, uh, that's very important. Do you see, um, you all as being able to keep that going, to get all these requests in for cameras, number one, and number two, on another issue is, um, I'm always asking about whether or not we should have more, uh, probation offices in schools, especially where we have a lot of problems, so that we don't lose youngsters who have to go, who have to report in because they have to, uh, report in to someone because they're on probation. Those are my two questions.
So, uh, with regard to getting more cameras, uh, some of that is a discussion beyond just my purview. I won't be able to unilaterally make that, uh, decision, you know, because it's a fiscal one, but as, as I've said before, um, and we've talked before, and, and I, I support them, one, because it gives us another tool, but also, as you said, the reality of it is it makes people feel better. So even if it's not really doing what you want it to do all the time with regard to monitoring everything, you better believe that people in your districts appreciate them and they understand, or they believe that it, it adds another component to their safety. And, and, you know, we can get up here and talk about that over the last 10 years, that there's significant drops in crime, which there, which there are. But if people don't feel safer, then really, it doesn't really matter, right? And so with regard to the probation officer thing, unfortunately, Councilwoman, I'll have to defer that to juvenile probation, because we don't really get involved in whether they're in schools. But whatever we can do to make our schools safer, you know, we're for that. You know, it was your buddy who was instrumental in getting a lot of this diversion off the ground, and, uh, I thought he, I thought he missed us, I'm talking about Deputy Bethel, he doesn't. So, he's just-
That's absolutely awful.
He's happy doing what he's doing, and, uh, he said he feels like, uh, a gigantic boulder was removed from him in terms of stress. And that's how a lot of people who do this job feel. When you're committed to it, you know, you live and you, you, you actually are a little anxious every time the phone goes off, because you're worried about some other violent act that's gonna happen, and, and so people give their heart and souls to this job, from police officer all the way up. And so it, it, it can be taxing all the way across the board, but we, we're up for the challenge.
Thank you all, thank you. And you know how we feel about, uh, Kevin Bethel, we miss him and give him our best.
We miss him too.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Rose Brown.
Please give us an update, if you will, on the police headquarters, uh, to be ultimately constructed, completed, in Councilwoman Janie Blackwell's area.
The latest information that we have is that Department of Public Property continues to work on the exterior, shoring everything up, and that the new administration is exploring options as to, um, what they're gonna do with that space and who's gonna occupy which parts of it. So that's all we have right now. When public property comes, they may be able to give a little more detail, but at our last meeting, that's where we were with it.
So that is to suggest that that may not end up being the police headquarters building?
I think that the bottom line, Councilwoman, is, is there, there's still discussions, um, but they, they're at least doing what they need to do to shore up the structural part of that building for now. Um, but I think what the deputy is saying, that this juncture, uh, Department of Public Property would be better served to answer what, how far they've gone and what they're doing in that building.
Okay. Looking for my other questions, I took notes here. I wanna underscore, uh, Councilwoman Sanchez's, uh, ask, and that is to provide, um, X number of years of what has happened over time, just so that we can see where the trends are and where the, the need for overtime uptick and why. It just helps to see the big picture a, as you, as you frame out where to cast and allocate dollars going forward.
Absolutely.
So that information would be exceedingly helpful. Um, how well is the police department doing in the area of procurement, when it comes to buying local, when it comes to all of what we ask about for every single department, MBE, WBE activity? Give us a, an overview, if you will.
Well, our, our department continues to strive but struggle in that area.
Talk, talk closer to the mic, pull it closer to you.
We continue to strive but struggle in that area. Some of our products that we don't have a lot of control of are specialty products that are sole sourced. The ones that we purchase locally, if we can, we do, but a lot of the category strictly goes to the lowest bidder. If they're not the lowest bidder, we don't have that option through procurement. We currently have a 20% rate, but that's gonna go down. I mean, in, in interest of being completely honest, we don't have a lot of our contracts in this year yet. We only have about 800,000 of an expected 3 million in. So when the rest of those come in, we know there's several of them that have little or no minority participation.
Such as? Call, call a few categories.
Um, such as our large purchases, our, our purchase for services, like our, um, vests, for instance.
Okay.
Police ballistic vests.
So that's physical, that's physical, physical needs. What about the professional side?
Professional services for our, um, psychologists, people who do our, um, drug scanning tests. There are some of our larger contracts that do our, both entry and our, um, required testing for drug scanning. We also have stuff like meals for prisoners and those types of things.
Meals for prisoners?
Meals for prisoners, which is about 218,000 a year. We-
So am I hearing that we're having difficulty finding local vendors, restaurateurs, who cannot meet the stipulations with the Philadelphia Police Department when it comes to feeding people?
Well, the lowest bid that we had, and it was the only bid, um, last year, was 79 cents per meal. What the issue comes in is, is that they have to be delivered to all the police installations that have-
I see.
It's not just a matter of providing, and it's not just coming to police headquarters.
But it's also transportation.
It's transportation.
I see.
So it becomes more challenging at that type of bid, at that price. It's somewhat cost prohibitive for some of the local places that know they have to go to nine installations to get meals there three times a day, because you have a different number of prisoners each day, and a different number of, that are in custody that have to be fed. Uh, this year, there's been actually health standards that say that now they have to have, um, a different type of meal, which will then pull the cost of the meal up itself too.
I see. Wow.
We know we have work to do on this, Councilwoman, and, and, and we're gonna continue to look at different ways, debundling and all kinds of things, to figure out if we can meet, you know, our, our goals on this, but it's, it's challenging, that's the bottom line.
Okay. I'll leave that there for now. Uh, let's circle back to this notion of recruitment. I, I'm a firm believer that, that we can, we can do well when we, to use your word, intentional with Community College of Philadelphia, um, Philadelphia OIC, um, maybe even using the PAL experience as a pipeline-
Sure.
-for capturing the attention of young people. So with, with regards to your interface with young people, is it sys, is it district-wide, and by that I mean you have X number of police districts, and so are, does each police district have some linkage with the high schools in that area, strictly, uh, around building relationships, um, opening up their eyes towards career opportunities? Or is it done, uh, does it happen because police officers believe in themselves that they want to do this, and so they do?
Well, I think the unstructured part is the relationships that you have with your local schools, your particular districts that you're, you're referring to.
Yes.
I think that happens, but the structured part happens with our recruitment unit, that travels all over. They go beyond, as you know, we don't have a residency thing. Uh, so they travel beyond the, the, the boundaries of Philadelphia, and they go to the historically black colleges, uh, they go, uh, all over the place in attempts to recruit military bases in an, in an effort to get people-
Is that right?
Yes, we, we, we've been doing that, and, uh, so, and we're gonna continue to do that. But I, I believe in as much that the informal aspect of it can be just as impactful. Uh, for example, I may have mentioned this before, I'm proud that at E9 Tabernacle, every so often on a gigantic screen, you know, it's a large, large church with 15,000 members, and, and a recruitment, um, screen will just pop up, and it may not, no words are with it, but it'll be there, and, uh, and get into your subconscious, and to pass that along to, to people who you may not be interested, but to get people interested in this occupation.
So that, that's very innovative, is thinking out of the, is, is crossing the traditional lines of recruitment.
Right.
And, and so there may be an opportunity to take that, um, citywide, across clergy who get it, had that capability in their churches, and would welcome a chance to emulate what E9 does, does well already.
Right, and so I, I run the chaplain program, or I'm the liaison, shall I say, and have been for a couple of years, and, and not only there, but in any meeting, like the one I was with Councilman Greenly last night, I shamelessly will pivot, even if the meeting has nothing to do with recruitment, and find a way to throw that out, not necessarily for the people who are in attendance, but for them to go out and say, you know, I just heard someone from the police department talking about the fact that they're trying to get people, and maybe you should consider that as an occupation. And, because we get some folks who are stellar individuals, go through the ranks, who they, they didn't necessarily want to be police officers their entire career, something, you know, was a catalyst to that.
Sure, sure.
And so we're trying to get everybody, you know, as many people as we can to be ambassadors for us. I mean, you don't have to wanna be a police officer personally, but to talk about it on behalf of us.
Okay. Um, that will be it. I will, do wanna meet your recruitment officer, though, offline.
Absolutely.
Okay? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Very much, Council President. Um, this is really just a point of information or a point of clarification, not so much a question, unless somebody wants to correct me. So, you know, I just wanted to, um, answer the issue of stop and frisk, um, as I understand it, and I, I think because there's a lot of confusion around it, and there's a lot of misunderstanding about stop and frisk. And I too have answered publicly on the radio stations and to the press, you know, um, am I for or against stop and frisk as a crime fighting strategy? I said I'm against it. And, uh, if I'm asked now, has the city or the mayor, I can't speak for the mayor, but have I reversed my position? No. What I try to explain is, um, stop and frisk, or Terry stops, or pedestrian stops, have been around for a long time. It only got clarified by the Supreme Court in Terry versus Ohio. It articulated what the standards are. And, and so there was never a complaint about pedestrian stops, at least not on a wholesale neighborhood community basis until a couple of years ago. And I, and I think, and may be wrong, that's because I think in New York, or maybe in some other cities, they announced that stop and frisk would be a crime fighting strategy, and I don't know that that was used here or said here, but somewhere in Philadelphia, people got the notion that, uh, stop and frisk was gonna be a crime fighting strategy. The reason I said I did not agree with it, and I was opposed to it, is it because it cannot possibly be a crime fighting strategy. It is, as you said, you know, an evidentiary issue. What occurs is that when there's a description, for example, of man with a gun with a yellow jacket and a red hat running south on 52nd Street, and lo and behold, here comes someone, the question is, do the police have the right, even if they don't have a reasonable, uh, basis, uh, you know, do they, do they have beyond a reasonable doubt or a reasonable, do they have an ability to stop that person for investigatory purposes? to stop that person for investigatory purposes? And the answer is yes, they do. But the second part is not just that there's a reasonable suspicion of criminality, it's that the person is armed and dangerous. And so that information, for the police officer's safety, allows them to do a pat-down specifically for something that might be a weapon, not to do an internal search, look in their wallet or anything like that. So if they have a reasonable articulose suspicion that criminality is afoot, and that's the person based on the description, and they believe they're armed and dangerous because that was included, and they feel something that feels like the butt of a handgun, not only can they arrest them, that weapon is admissible in court. They do not have to go into their pocket, they don't have to go into their wallet, they're not allowed. That's not admissible anyway. But once a person's been arrested, those items are inventoried. And when they're inventoried, any illegal substances, for example, will be used against the person. They just can't simply go in their pocket, but if they're arrested, those things are inventoried. So from my perspective, protecting the police officer's safety as they perform what they should be doing, an investigation based on a reasonable articulose suspicion, and only doing the pat-down because the person is reputed or stated to be armed and dangerous, and they see something and feel something, is a constitutional standard. But when, whether it's true or not, in some cities, they announce that we're going to do pat-downs as a crime fighting tool, well, you couldn't possibly do that because now what you're saying is we're going to aggressively or proactively go out and pat people down. Who are you patting down? Why are you patting them down? And then it becomes an issue of whether you're doing this on a racial basis or some illegal basis. The Terry stop is just a result of doing an investigation. So for me, when I say, or I think when the city says, if there is a effort to stop people based on general notions of crime fighting, that would be unconstitutional. But Terry stops and pedestrian stops that are constitutional should and will continue. But I think the public needs to be made clear on the fact that this isn't a reversal of position or the condoning of unconstitutional stops. It's simply the continuation of constitutional but limited procedures allowed by the Supreme Court. So anyway, that's just my point of clarification. If I've somehow stated something that is not in the practice of Philadelphia, I can stand to be corrected.
You're fine.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Leader. Just want to do a small line of questioning regarding hiring practices, specifically in the area of diversity, African-Americans, people of color in the Philadelphia Police Department. I want to commend you for your, not recommendations, but actually moving forward and raising the limit of, raising the limit to age 22 and addressing the college credit issue. So I do appreciate that, because that was one of the things I was going to ask. When you talk about diversifying the Philadelphia Police Department, I was looking at statistics that says Caucasians are overrepresented in the Philadelphia's police force by 20.4 percentage points. The department is nine percentage points less black than the city as a whole, and five percentage points less Hispanic and less Asian than is the overall Philadelphia population. Furthermore, 83% are male. The statistics goes on to say there are 74 captains in the department, 82% are white, and 18% are black. There are no Latino or Asian captains in the Philadelphia Police Department. And I know as we move forward, as a progressive city and making sure that the Philadelphia Police Department is reflective of the population that it serves, what are the strategies and the plans to diversify the police department? Not only from a recruitment standpoint, but also creating a pipeline of higher-level management as relates to diversity? That's the first part of my question. And then the second part is the issue I would like to follow up with regarding the 12th Police District, which is one of the largest police districts here in the city of Philadelphia, about the possibility of splitting the 12th between lower southwest Philadelphia and the higher end of southwest Philadelphia, which is the Eastwick area, and the distribution of resources between, equally throughout the 12th Police District. And so that's a twofold question, because I know I'm under a time limit, so I want to put those two out there. But the first is the recruitment strategies and plans to diversify the Philadelphia Police Department recruitment level, but also the promotion of high-level managers as relates to the workforce. Thanks.
So first of all, just in the way of clarifying a few stats, in our database, we actually 57% white, 32% black, 8.4% Latino, 1.4, 1.7 Latino, 78% male. One of the struggles that we have, it transcends even the racial demographics and gender is a problem. This lady seated to my left is the only person, a white female above the rank of captain, the only one. Now, historically, we've had several white female captains in the department, and I just point that out to say that it's problematic in many ways. And so we are struggling in to improve our, not only our more balanced demographics across the department in general, and that's one of the things we're hoping that the educational thing might help us with. We're not sure if that's going to help. I mean, my first step is to get police officers, because if you need somebody, your first thing is you're not worried about what they look like if you got an emergency. But let's be honest, there is some need to be reflective of, you know, your city and its population. And so, again, using the word intentional and trying to be very intentional about our targets, trying to get people in the doors, but we do have a civil service process. And so we cannot circumvent that, at least not until you get to the level of deputy commissioner. Everything else, you have to go through the ranks, and that's just where we are. And it does create some challenges, but we actually, in an unprecedented way, though, we have, I think, three or four black female district captains. You've never seen that. I mean, Sinalyn...
That's in the 17th.
You have one. That's right. And so we have in the 18th, we have in the 16th, and, you know, we have at least two more that are in significant command. So that is something that is so important for us. But we've got issues we've got to deal with. So you're absolutely right. We got to work in a number of ways to improve our demographics. And again, I just point out, it's not just about race, it's about a lot of things we got to improve upon. And about the second question with the 12th District, I will be honest with you, as you know, I always am.
You always are.
I have no desire to split any more districts. Doesn't mean it won't happen. It doesn't mean something higher than me won't make that happen. But at this point, we don't leverage our resources the best way by splitting them. We would leverage the most by combining districts, not splitting them. But you're right, that district's big. Councilman Heenan's district's even bigger, and I know that's a big push there as well.
I think I got my cue from the same scenario.
Yeah, I know, and it's probably the same question was going to come up. So that's why I tried to do it at one time. But at any rate, I, but that, maybe that's for another conversation, another time. But be candid with you, you know, I won't say something to you just to get out of the room.
Of course not.
And I do not, at this point, have any real interest in doing that.
We don't expect that. And I'll wrap up, because my time is over. I do just want to just reiterate, at least for me, and I know it's recruiting as many people as possible, because you want to fill your ranks, and so you can put more boots on the ground. I just want to just reiterate, for me, as some aspect, we have to be intentional, specifically when it comes to race, people of color, only because I think that also goes toward building the trust level when it comes to working in partnership with community organizations and the constituencies that we serve. And so I think some component does, has to be intentional, specifically when you're dealing with race and making sure that the population in the Philadelphia Police Department is diversified. And I heard you say it, I just wanted to just reiterate on the intentional component, the specific strategies to get more people of color to say, okay, this is a pipeline, this is the direction I want to go into in my life. Because obviously, it's an honorable profession to be a part of, and just making sure that it's diversified as much as possible.
I couldn't agree with you more.
Just want to thank you for your time today. And I'm finished for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And, you know, just to add to that conversation about districts being split, and, you know, it does come down to recruitment and, you know, the amount of officers that we have.
You're right. We wouldn't have the people to staff them if I wanted to do it, and that would be the problem.
And I've learned, and look, I was responding to my constituents. The constituents petitioned and had... I think the city received that extra officers. They had a robust class, so, you know, they were distributed across the city, so we're proud of that. So let me change that conversation a little bit here. Commissioner, real quick, I've got a few questions. How do you calculate, what is the formula that you calculate the vacancy allowances?
For each district or the department as a whole?
Overall. I mean, is it per district, then?
Well, we've been working with a budgeted strength of 65-25 for at least five or six years. It used to be higher than that. And quite frankly, it's not that scientific. That's what we were budgeted for on their last administration, and that's what we're working with. Now, if the question goes to how do we decide in individual districts, it depends on a lot of things, like the number of people, the density that you're talking about, the level of calls or the number of calls for service that we get. It's a whole host of things that we look at. We actually had Northwestern University about six or seven years ago do a whole manpower resource allocation study for us, and trying to see whether we were even in the ballpark. For some districts, we were, relative to the suggestions that they made. We didn't directly respond or react to that, but we at least had that done. There are probably very few departments who have any real scientific formula surrounding their precincts or districts, but you just try to use trends, data, and everything else to make an educated decision. But it's not really that scientific. There are people who are in academia will tell you that it could be, but I don't know that I agree with that.
Okay. Last questions for me would be on vehicles. What is the status of our vehicles and the average age of the vehicles we have, and how many do we need? How many more? Would be your wish list on how many vehicles that we would like to have?
I can get back to you with the average age. It is newer than it was when we were here this time last year. I think three or four years ago, there was a decision made not to buy vehicles that year. And we've kind of swam upstream ever since, but have closed that gap because now it was recognized that that, based on the usage, we use our vehicles 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It wasn't practical to not buy any. This year, I believe we're getting 120 new vehicles. We're phasing out the ones that are older and moving in the ones that are better for patrol. And that'll be a mix of both SUVs, patrol vehicles, all, most, majority of them marked.
Would it be in this fiscal year or just this calendar year?
It'll be in this upcoming fiscal year.
Okay. That's great.
And they are improving. You know what I mean? We, every year, get new ones, we phase out what isn't good, and we try to do whatever we can to take care of the ones we have as well.
And I'm going to talk with procurement office and, you know, encourage them to purchase local and in scale, I think would be helpful, one of the go on the record for that. Vehicles, or bikes? I think bikes, are they counted as vehicles, or are they...
They are not.
How are they? Okay.
We have 538 bikes as well, bicycles.
That's wonderful. Glad to hear that. I appreciate that. That's all I have for today. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. Chair's trying to get us to finish up, so we can take a break here. Just on the staff hiring, are we going to be using selective factor and the three points bilinguals as we staff up?
There has been no decision to do that. I know that's been something you've been pushing for some time now, but there...
Yeah, sound like a broken record here.
Yeah, no, I know. But this, to be candid with you, there is nothing underway to do that, to be honest with you, at this point.
Why not?
Because we just haven't talked about it, to be blunt, not internally. And I just think that that's a heavier push than maybe we think, but we'll talk about that. Is that fair?
Yeah, we're going to keep talking about it. In terms of language access, how do we track when translation services are needed at the district?
When it comes through police radio, they track everyone, because some of their language lines, some actually ask for interpreters, and those requests have gone up every single year, which is a good thing.
Are we tracking that?
We track them by month, and I'd be happy to send that to you.
And I say that because we, part of the law and the charter change require language access plans, so some departments were better than others around tracking those requests. So I think as we come up with the plans, I'd like to see, do we track when bilingual officers do it? I find that many times they do it. Do they record it? Are we making sure?
Well, we have our officers who are LEP trained, and then we have our additional officers who are bilingual but not LEP. Either that their confidence level isn't such that they test it through LEP, but we still show it on, as an interpretation on the report. But anything that comes through either our language line or a request for interpreter is tracked monthly. And I saw this year, year-to-date, we already have over 2,000 requests, which for 6,000 for an entire year, it's obviously showing us on pace at around 8,000 for this upcoming year. So to me, it's encouraging because people are knowing that it's available and they're using it. So I'm hoping to even expand on that.
Good. Thank you. High-level discussions, as we talk about whether it's a new police district, you know, I appreciate you saying that you wouldn't add more, but you'd really consolidate more. Has there been any thought, I mean, we did this big capital assessment of all the buildings, which one require work? I know at that point, Mayor Kenny, then Councilman Kenny and I and others kind of looked at that with public property and others. Has there been any thought to co-locating in existing facilities as, you know, and I'll use this as an example, you know, the 26th District over there in Fishtown, limited parking, you know, so, and there's a plan to spend a whole lot of money fixing the roof and other stuff. Have we thought about potential co-locations?
Absolutely. Looked at at least one or two areas where you could do that. And that, you're hitting on my point, you actually are able to gain more from doing that than you are from splitting those districts, irrespective of what your manpower is at the time, because you could put more people in one place. You make that one district, as we did with the 22nd and 23rd, and now the 22nd District, and, you know, even down in South Philadelphia. So we continue to look at that. I've had conversations with the mayor about that. And so as we go forward, we'll see how feasible it is to do that in certain districts.
Potentially looking at close down school buildings and other places, because school buildings tended to be located in strategic locations and neighborhoods?
Right, right. So you, again, those discussions are preliminary, obviously, in this administration, but the mayor is very cognizant of that, because we've spoken about it. But, you know, as you know, some of that's above my pay grade, but I think he is open to exploring all those options.
Okay. So we'll make some suggestions over around some of those facilities. Obviously, I have a new facility, 24th, the 24th and the 25th, but, you know, I look at the 26th facility, and they're building residential stuff right up to the wall of it, and the police officers finding it more and more difficult to park. So that's one of those buildings that before we make a $500,000 investment, we may want to consider and say, do we relocate it somewhere where it's more appropriate than having it squeezed among third-story decks that can, I think, now look into the building? So going back to the civilian police piece, is this something that you're going, you know, as we talk about manning potential cameras and stuff, is this some internal discussions in the past? Is someone going to be looking at that, under which one of your deputies you're going to look that for long-term? You know, because, you know, New York does traffic stuff, and as we look at your senses and being short-staffed, you know, many times we end up covering that. Is that something that we're seriously going to look at? We talked about it in the beginning of last administration, and then it just kind of went nowhere.
Yeah, it's something we'll look at, but I can't, I have to be honest about the fact that clearly it's a collective bargaining issue as well. You're talking about bargaining member work in some issues, so that's an hurdle that may have to be navigated. may have to be navigated in the next contract, or just to talk about, even if it's feasible. But again, just from a selfish standpoint, and I mentioned New York, it was nice to see things that looked like police, and you just realized, oh, that's actually a traffic cop, or that's actually a school cop. And some people would argue, well, about the safety of that, I don't think New York City has an issue with it. But again, that's funding, that's collective bargaining.
Especially traffic stuff, as you see all these police officers around the convention center, around Eagles, name. I mean, I think that Council, and definitely this mayor, is hugely committed to appropriately funding the police department. So this is not about not giving the police department what it needs, it really is about adding value and using the trained officers to the best of their, to the ability. So this is a time to have the discussion as we staff.
No, I'm glad, Councilwoman, that you said that about the administration, because the mayor's been nothing but supportive of the police department.
And so this is the time to talk about it, sort of like, folks, how do we complement, you know, the workforce in a way that, that there's no challenges, we're not short-changing anybody?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll cooperate till we can go.
You may. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown, and then we will go to recess.
Yes, I begged him to, just let me do a follow-up question. Who is the point person on your team to have subsequent conversations and discussions around human trafficking?
Me.
Got it. Okay. Terrific.
Actually, me and the captain of Special Victims, and that's Captain Mark Bergman. But I was kind of the point person, and if it's you, then you call me. If it's someone of your staffers, we can hook you up with Captain Bergman from Special Victims.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, being, no, thank you, Councilwoman. Being, no other members have any other questions. I want to thank you all for your testimony and answering all our questions today, and we look forward to working with you throughout this budget process. So thank you. And I do want to make a special recognition for our court reporter. Thank you for your endurance for this morning's session. Thank you. We will be reconvening the committee of the hall until 2:30 this afternoon.